Mr. Bremen, who is absent and so sitting in his place this evening will be.
He's here now.
Yes, I think we all, all 10, all 10 members, all nine members present and accounted for. Mr. Elliott said he might be a little late this evening, so all your regular members are not here.
All right, welcome Commissioner Bremen.
All right, but the latest.
No problem. Uh, first item on the agenda are meeting minutes uh from March 9 uh 2021.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Francis.
One word missing, I told.
Yeah, second by Commissioner Corcoran. Um, thanks. So I have um a comment here. Did you say that there's a word missing? You found a word missing?
Arrived, arrived.
Arrived, uh, for me? Yeah, thanks. And Commissioner Corcoran, did you have any other comments about the minutes? No, all right, so I, I think that um for um members present, I think it should note that I was present but arrived late. Uh, I think that was approximately 7:30. I'm correctly noted as having been present for the public hearing portion um of the meeting. Now, to that end, um, I did not go back and watch the tape of the executive session. Uh, and so um I, there was really, there was no, no reason for me to do that. I can go back and look at 7:30, 7:50 Commerce Drive at any time on the um, the pre-application hearing, which I intend to do, but I just didn't need to do it for this meeting. And so I suggest that change, but I think I should recuse myself from um voting on the minutes. And in which case, um, Commissioner Gordon, you can sit in for me um on, on the minutes, okay? And so um Commissioner Francis, uh, you, you accept a slight change there for the, my suggestion that including reference to my arrival?
Yes, although I think that's the way they do it, is they don't put the person up there and they put it down when he or she arrives. I think historically, that's how they do it.
Is that right? I, I haven't noted. The way I've seen it in, in other um contexts, it's uh noted as, as present but late.
Party sent to the corner. It's irrelevant.
So I'll leave it to staff, however it's been done in the past is fine, just to, just to note that I was there. So, so Commissioner Gordon, you're, you're sitting in my place for the minutes. Um, right, the motion is to approve with the adding of a word um about my arrival. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? The minutes are adopted unanimously. This item is 425 Brookside Drive, request of Attorney Fallon for a five-year extension of a special exception uh site plan on behalf of the Habad of Fairfield.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Jim Went for the record, uh, in June of 2016, uh, the commission approved a special exception application for the Habad of Fairfield to establish a place of worship uh at the former Elks Club Lodge and property on Brookside Drive. That change of use has been established. Uh, the proposal did include a new residence for the rabbi and his family, uh, a building and building additions. The building additions have not yet occurred for the lodge building proper. Uh, we have just issued a permit uh to begin the construction of the residence. And no regulatory changes have um been made that would affect this uh property since its approval in 2016. Uh, the extension request would allow another five years for the completion of those improvements pursuant to our regulations.
Thank you. I did see that they started construction, which is great. It's great to see. Yeah, really nice. Very good. So this is as of right, there's been no change. So can I have a motion on this? Motion to approve by Commissioner Levy and second by Commissioner Francis. Any comments, Commissioner Lee?
None.
Okay, Commissioner Francis?
Could, uh, re- remodeling is all internal, correct? There's no big changes or building changes?
No, there was an addition to the lodge itself that was proposed in some, in some renovations, what they have yet to do. They've established the use of their place of worship in the building, but they haven't done the, the physical improvements to the building that they had anticipated yet.
Right. But we didn't approve any change, any expansion, did we?
Yeah, there was. There was an addition and some cosmetic renovations to the building, which they.
Oh, there is a small addition, okay.
They're, they're doing a fundraising campaign. That's the chief reason. They've got enough money now to go forward with the rabbi's residence. They're trying to raise the, the rest of the money to do the rest of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners have any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Commissioner Bremen, that was in favor or opposed? You, you, you looked like you were a little late to the party there.
In favor.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I thought. All right, excellent. So the uh, the extension is granted unanimously. I wish them the best of luck in their fundraising. Next is 783 Kings Highway, request of Al Camerata for 100% release of a $45,810 bond pertaining to special permit improvements in the design commercial district.
Again, Jim Went for the record, Mr. Chairman, this site is at the corner of Haley Avenue in Kings Highway. Uh, in February of 2018, the commission approved a special permit for the construction of a nine-unit residential apartment building. Uh, the building has two occupied stories above grade level parking. Work has been completed. Uh, the building is occupied. The engineering department, and there was an email in your packet, uh, confirms it and recommends 100% release of the bond at this time. And, and we concur and make, uh, and agree with that recommendation.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion on this item from someone? Motion to approve by Commissioner Bremen, second by Commissioner Noonan. Thank you, guys. Commissioner Bremen, any comments, questions?
No comments.
Commissioner Noonan?
Release the bond.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Braun, yes. You're on mute.
Which project is this? Is this something that we voted on in the past year? Is this from an old thing from before that?
February of 2018 approval.
Okay, so that's before my time, so I'll, I'll recuse. I don't know anything about the project. I mean, I'll abstain.
Okay, I don't, I don't know that um technically you would be required to abstain based upon the um, uh, the requirement of the bond and the recommendation of the hearing department confirming that the works been done and recommending that the, the bond be released. I don't need to get into that right now, but I don't see that you need to recuse yourself. But, okay. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all releases not entirely, say aye, raise your hand. Any opposed? And any extensions? One, Commissioner Braun. So the, the bond is, is released entirely for $45,810, 100%. Next item is outdoor dining, uh, item D, uh, review of outdoor dining inventory and our annual recertification. We have a few wrinkles this year. You're in the hot seat.
Yeah, um, you know, this is the time of year when we typically review the list of approved outdoor dining locations. And so we provided for you that spreadsheet um with those, the first, there were two spreadsheets in your attachment. The first was all of the establishments that have commissioned approval, uh, typically conditioned on a one-year extension. But last year, obviously, uh, at this time, we were thrown into a bit of a turmoil. And um with, through executive order and with work through the town's administration, there was broad support for the idea of allowing a relaxation of certain rules pursuant to a governor's executive order to allow restaurants to expand their outdoor dining footprint for obvious reasons and constraints brought on by the, by the pandemic. So there is a second list there of all of the establishments, some, some of which already had approved outdoor dining and, and uh, some of which were new to outdoor dining, kind of forced into it. And it's been our experience through this past year that that opportunity has been both critical for the restaurant community to, to stay afloat during this pandemic, and it's been generally very well received by the public as well. So there's been a lot of discussion within the administration and our permitting team. And it was our thought going forward that we would uh renew, if you will, the, the COVID permits that were approved administratively for the upcoming season, even though recently we're at, you know, I'll put air quotes, around 100% indoor capacity. Because of the social distancing requirements for tables, that, that doesn't mean that a restaurant can really effectively achieve 100% indoor capacity. And, and many folks, uh, I don't know about you, myself, I, I would be more comfortable being outside this season than, than indoors. So we think uh in the administration included is, supports the idea of renewing the COVID protocol permits as well. There is a lot of discussion in Hartford. You saw a little bit of chatter via email today uh about a bill that might be, you know, pending to make it a more formalized process to allow commissions to uh extend uh an additional opportunity for COVID purposes. We don't know yet. The governor's executive order may in fact be extended to allow it to be done administratively. But in, uh, if, if none of those things happen, that, you know, the first select woman is, is really supportive of the idea going forward to allow these COVID dining, uh, uh, at least for this next upcoming dining season. And work, and we hope that you support that idea and, and allow us to move forward administratively as we did last year with that second list of permits. So I don't know. I'll leave it to your discretion, Mr. Chairman, if you want to make a formal vote on extending uh any of this, any of the previously approved or the COVID. Whether, uh, you know, informationally, you guys support the concept of us moving forward with renewing these COVID protocol permits. But I think it's important personally, you know, to our restaurant community that really is depending on this to, you know, keep their businesses going. That's, that's all I have at this point, unless you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you very much. So I, 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 I agree, and thank you very much for, for putting the, the, the list together separate from our usual outdoor dining uh recertifications. You know, I, it, it, it's, it's, it's very plain to, I think, all of us that, as you mentioned, notwithstanding the lifting other restrictions on restaurants, they still can't operate as they usually would um with social distancing and barriers and, and such. And they really are relying on the additional outdoor space to um, you know, to make things work and to service uh the members of the public who, who obviously want to, um, want to dine. My, my personal feeling is that um we recertify the, you know, the, the original list and certify the list of COVID-19 through um, you know, next year. We would take it up again next, next March. And um, you know, I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong here, but you know, we really, uh, through the executive order through, through Hartford, we extended the um, the outdoor dining uh permits, you know, sort of beyond our usual cutoff of whatever it is. Uh, you know, October, I think, uh, right? Yeah, yeah. And, and, and it was sort of as weather permitting, you know, you had people in restaurants opening tables outside and had people, you know, dining outside in, you know, under, under patio heaters and, and all the rest of it. And which I, you know, unless things change dramatically, I, I think, uh, I think I anticipate that we're going to be in a similar kind of boat, you know, through the, through the fall. Um, you know, hopefully things get, get better, but um, I think even if they do ease further, you know, the restaurants are going to be well-to-do, well-served by having the additional space. So I would, I would advocate for that. Does that, does that, does that sound like um, you know, process-wise, you know?
That makes perfect sense to me, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So um, with that, um, Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in favor, but I do have a question for, for Jim. The, the reason we've had, this is expanded from what it used to be. So what are the reasons that it used to be more restrictive than this? Like, is there a downside to the expansion even for one year?
Well, so, uh, one, one, one example would be, would be parking, right? So, 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 you know, one of the ways that restaurants have been able to expand their outdoor dining capacity was to convert, use some of the parking spaces that they had um for tables. And that, that impacts our uh parking analysis, um, you know, under our regulations and, and also, you know, site plans that are on file and things like that. So it is a departure, um, which I think we need to take stock of at, at some point. I could, we need to either go back to where we were. Or we need to formally bring expanded outdoor dining into a certification process where there's going to be, you know, plans, you know, filed and, and recertified.
I would, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would also add to that, that I think this uh laboratory, if you will, uh, has shown us that, that at least in my opinion, th- there's perhaps room to um relax certain provisions of our regulations to allow perhaps a greater footprint under our normal permitting processes. You know, so, so I think longer term, we might be making some recommendations too about potential tweaks to the regulation to accommodate that. But in the near term, um, you know, I think the administrative approval of these lists would be helpful for us going forward to allow us to administer that. But I think in the longer term, uh, I think uh we, we might bring forth some, some changes to, to perhaps uh allow this opportunity a little less cumbersomely from a regulatory standpoint. So that's, that's a longer-term discussion, but uh I agree that opportunity is out there.
Either um, uh, entertain a, a motion to uh approve the recertification as well as the COVID certifications through next year, uh, unless, yes, Commissioner Braun? You?
So moved.
So moved, very good, thank you. And second for, by Commissioner Bremen? Yep, terrific. All right, great. So that's, that's the motion on the, on the table. Other commissioners have comments, questions? Okay, I think it would, this, this would certainly be well-received from, you know, our economic development community, the restaurant community and as well as the citizens. So I'm, I'm happy to see the support for it. All right, all in favor, say aye, raise your hands. Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, very well. That's, that's great. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Um, next item on our agenda is 1143 Sasko Hill Road, a review of preliminary subdivision open space proposal. But we did get a, a letter um a few hours before the meeting. Mr. Went, you want to just introduce this?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not going to go completely into what I wrote. You have the material um that was attached to the staff comments. There was some subsequent material submitted. But we did receive today, the applicant is requesting that this matter be held off to the next meeting as they are trying to provide some additional information to bring to bear uh on this matter that might be beneficial. So they are requesting this matter be put off to our next meeting, which is the 13th of, of April.
Right, thank you. So, so we, we, we can actually um do something here. I, you know, the applicant wants the additional time to get um, you know, to provide us with additional information. Um, we have um, what is in the file is, is, is an application um to allocate open space. A portion of the, the easement in favor of Aspetuck Land Trust for this, uh, the open space requirement in lieu of a, a fee. And the Conservation Commission uh having recommended to us that we, we take a fee in lieu of the open space. And the applicant uh desiring to um gather some additional information. A, a, a piece of which I believe is a position of the Aspetuck Land Trust, who would be um, you know, impacted by uh a decision, you know, that, that we might make, i- i- you know, uh, if we were to adopt the applicant's pro- proposal. Um, you know, the, the easement would be impacted. So um, I think it's really important that we hear from them. But um, you know, with all of that having been, been said, I also think um that the process by which we should receive this and, and, and handle the um, you know, the, the, the application is through a public hearing. I, I, I think that um, uh, the applicant should make their presentation. I think they should e- explain to us, um, you know, the basis for their uh request and, and, you know, even perhaps explain why the Conservation Commission made a, you know, a different referral. As well as present the information from third parties, in particular Aspetuck Land Trust. If they could come and talk to us about their position on the application, um, that would be helpful. And then members of the public, um, you know, could be heard with any concerns or, or questions that, that they may have. Because, you know, this, this impacts the, the public, and that's the purpose of the requirement. And so um, you know, and then this is not insignificant. This is a 20-acre parcel, you know, on our coastline. And so uh I think that um we would be serving our public well by um, by handling this through, through a public hearing. And, and so, uh, so with that, um, you know, I, I would entertain a, a motion in light of everything that you've heard and the applicant's request. A motion to um, to table this item until our next regular meeting and at that meeting hear this uh on a public hearing, move it to public hearing. So I see two hands, Commissioner Noonan?
Yeah, I, I would like to hear this on a public meet, a public hearing. I would, do we need to even wait to make the, I make the motion to move this to public hearing now so that the next time we see this, it comes right up? And that would be a motion, I mean, unless you think otherwise, that would be the motion I would make now.
Yeah, just to, just to move it to public hearing.
Yeah.
Yep, that, that's, I think it serves the same purpose. Mr. Went, you think that, that's, that's the motion? Yep, very good. So that's the motion on the table. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Braun, thank you.
Yeah, in addition to, in addition to what you said, Mr. Chair, this is just not something I picked up very quickly, reading the materials. And there, there seems to be some, either I'm missing something or nuances, and I prefer a public hearing.
Yep. Very good. Commissioner Braun, any comments?
I would just ask that, I don't know if it has been included in the package, but um any Conservation Commission decision or advice or guidance be included in the package. It might have been already, I don't remember yet.
Yeah, so, so there is a, a notes, a notice of decision uh which um uh declares that the the recommendation is a fee in lieu of the donation of open space. There's no explanation of that, but um the, uh, the hearing, it was a, it was a hearing at which the applicant made a presentation. I don't know the details, but that's a public, you know, event, right? It was recorded. You can go watch the, the video um or the Zoom with the WebEx, whatever. Um, and listen to the arguments and also listen to the commission um debate and, and decide the matter. So I, I intend to do that uh before our next hearing. Um, and I, you know, encourage or at least, you know, let every, all of you know that you're entitled to do that if, if you're so inclined. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, just a question as, how does this tie in with the potential subdivision application?
Well, so, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Went.
As part of the, the, as part of your packet, there's a preliminary subdivision plan that lays out how the lots are proposed to be divided. And as part of that, as part of our subdivision regulations for properties with four or more acres or creating five or more lots, there's an open space provision. And I included that section uh in your uh, in the staff comment packet link that, that I sent to you uh whereby, uh, section two by 2.3 of the subdivision regulations that provides several options for the disposition of open space for, for subdivision, that 10% of the land be aside as open space. And there are several options for doing that, uh, including the one that the applicant is proposing is a uh to be deeded to an associate, a private association of property owners. Or the, the payment of a fee in lieu thereof, uh, if, if the commission feels that there's no open space defined in, in that section of the regulations, no open space benefit derived from the proposed disposition. Uh, it's your option to require the payment of a fee of open space in lieu of providing that. The applicant is suggesting and arguing uh that there is some benefit to this uh private arrangement that they are proposing. But certainly the discussion uh would, that, that is being suggested here would give that, you know, the applicant to have a dialogue with his commission on, on, uh, on the merits or, or lack thereof of that proposed proposal.
Excellent. Did that answer your question, Mr. Lee?
Yes, and just one follow-up uh so that we can think about it. Would one of the options be to, uh, in connection with that open space, making provision for public access?
Well, again, it's, it's, it's among the options that are within the open space regulations, yes. None, none is proposed at this point, but uh, yes, if you take a look at section 2.3, that is one of the disposition options. But again, we can get into that obviously in more detail uh as part of the discussion next.
Yeah, I just want to think about it.
No, absolutely. And then it's a, it's a good question. I mean, you know, the, the public presently has access to that waterfront um in front of the, the revetment. Now, uh, the photos that you all received from Mr. Went for the meeting are his photos that he went down, took at low tide, when you can actually walk in front of the uh revetment and, and, and pass back and forth, right, to, back to the, to the beach and so forth. At high tide, you know, the water is up on the rocks. And, and then beyond the rocks is, is the private property, which is the area where the Conservation uh easement in favor of Aspetuck Land Trust uh is. Um, and it's that portions of that land which is being proposed uh to be dedicated to the, to the open space. And in the um packet and the materials in the subdivision plan, you'll see those in dark, um, dark lines within the, within the easement on both the north side of the property and the south side of the property. There are two distinct portions of land within the easement that they're proposing be dedicated to this open space requirement. Okay, any other questions or comments?
One comment.
Yes. You're on mute.
I went down to, uh, Jim was reviewing this with me and it's, there's a large, the large gray area is already open space under the, well, dedicated to the Aspetuck Land Trust. And there, the, the lines, as, as you pointed out, the black lines are the two areas that they're planning to make open space to this development. And there is no public access now, anyway.
To those portions, that is correct.
Yeah, so I don't know. It's, it's a bit hard to understand because.
Which is why uh the motion. Hearing. So that the applicant can come in and, and explain that. We can ask the applicant questions. We can get Aspetuck Land Trust in, in front of us to tell us about their position. I, I, I'm understanding that we're going to get a letter from them. Uh, we can ask Aspetuck about that. Then the, the neighbor, you know, neighbors and, and members of the public can participate and ask questions and, 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 and hear the information themselves, and, and we can be more informed to, um, you know, to make a decision. Commissioner.
Difficult to understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Bremen?
Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said. There's obviously a significant public interest at stake here. And I, I think we should get all of the information and input that we can. One thing I will to note is, um, I think as, as I might pointed out, under 2.3.9, our decision about the open space issue is preliminary and it's not binding on our um final approval of the subdivision. and it's not binding on our final approval of the subdivision, which would come later.
That is correct.
And so we do have two bites at the apple.
We do, although, you know, in the bigger picture, you know, the developer needs to understand how this is going to play out, right? And so, you know, the fee of a property of this size is quite substantial. And, you know, if we're going to require that, then the developer may choose another path. You know, it just impacts the overall, the overall plan for the property as, you know, you could readily imagine, as opposed to, you know, providing for this open space, which of course impacts the property in a different way, right? But you kind of, kind of need to know one way or the other, you know, how you're going to manage it. So while I agree entirely with your comment that this is preliminary, it's non-binding, but same time, it's a pretty significant step in the process. And we need to be, you know, we need to be clear. Commissioner Braun?
Yeah, I still can't find the Conservation staff recommendation or whatever they wrote it on. Can we just make sure that's available? Perhaps even having the staff available if possible? If we have questions concerning the recommendation? I haven't read the recommendation, so.
You, I forwarded it to you, but I...
That might be a separate email, so I might not have seen it yet, thanks.
Anyone else have any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. The motion on the table is to move this item to public hearing at our next meeting. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? I lost video for a number of people, so I'm just kind of struggling with them. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, all right, looks, just got Meg, Commissioner Francis just got you back. Mark, you too. Any opposed? Raise your hand or say something? And any... This item is moved to public hearing unanimously, thank you everyone. Next item is our public hearing. The first two items are related, I'll call them together, zoning regulation amendment, application of Fairfield Medical LLC proposing our new Section 412.4.29, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity for workforce housing component, and 4185 Black Rock Turnpike zoning compliance application of Fairfield Medical LLC pertaining to a 94-unit residential development pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut general statutes. I'm sorry, I didn't quite introduce the public hearing before calling those items, so Attorney Smith, just give me one moment. So for members of the public that are here, this item is continued from February 9, February 23, and March 9. The applicant completed their opening. We completed public hearing, a public comment, and the applicant is in its rebuttal. We're here tonight for the applicant to finish up their rebuttal, which I anticipate we will be able to do, you know, before our curfew at 10. And then, once the applicant is finished, that item will be closed and the public hearing will be concluded with respect to those items for 4185 Black Rock Turnpike. When we finish with that, we will then call the items three and four for zoning regulation amendment and 15 Unco Road. And we'll open that public hearing with the applicant's presentation. When they're finished, and if they finish before 10:00 PM, we'll go to public comment. You can sign up for public comment in the chat box. I'll make another announcement. We likely won't finish that public hearing on Unco Road tonight. And we would continue that at our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which I anticipate we will get into a public comment portion at that point and applicant's rebuttal. And so with that, as a lay of land, Attorney Smith, turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ms. Harrigan and Mr. Went. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. I am a land use attorney with the law firm of Walter &amp; Pearson. And I appear before you this evening on behalf of the owner applicant Fairfield Medical LLC concerning this proposed residential site development with an affordable component as provided by Section 8-30G, real property known as 4185 Black Rock Turnpike. As the chair indicated, we were in our rebuttal. And what I'd like to do with permission of the chair is, we first have just an item that Mr. Peturla of the Huntington Company would like to address, and then we'll go back to Jason Williams, who was in the middle of his presentation when we hit the curfew. And after that, I would expect, we just, I don't think this will, certainly we won't go up to the 10 o'clock curfew unless we get a lot of questions. But, and we're more than welcome to address them. But with your permission, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Mike Peturla. Thank you.
Thank you.
M. Line, could you hear me?
I can hear you, we just can't see you yet, Mike.
Okay, maybe that's good. Can't get my face on that for some reason.
And that's okay, if you can't get the video, you can, we're happy to hear your voice, unless it's important to you.
Mike, can you hear us? Perhaps, Mr. Chairman, we can just wait a minute. And if not, we'll go to Jason, we can come back to Mike later. But maybe we can give him just an extra minute or two.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mike, and if you can hear me, your video button should be somewhere on the bottom, if that's what you want to do.
Did you hear me?
Yep, there you are, yep, we can hear you and see you.
I reappeared. Chris, you want me to finish up here?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, engineer and surveyor with the Huntington Company. I reviewed a couple letters, recent letters from the opponent's PE, Mr. Trinkus. Also want to bring to your attention an email from Laura Pooley to your commission through James Went, dated March 12 of 2021. And I'm sure that's in your file. One thing I'd like to start off by saying, I think I mentioned a couple weeks ago that we hired Hardeman Drilling to do borings only to find where the refusal was. The opposition kept telling you all and plus us that the, that we would find refusal at two to three feet. Hardeman Drilling found it to be much deeper than that. We stated there was fill on the property, which there was. Again, as Ms. Pooley said in her email, once and if project is approved, we go back out and do more testing. As far as the puddles that were found under the overpass of the Merritt Parkway on September 25, 2019, we looked at the National Weather Service for that date, and there was 5.61 inches of rain, which is quite a bit of rain. And that was one of the reasons. And again, as Jason Spath from my office stated, he went out in the field and checked the existing storm drainage system in several spaces, several places. And in particular, the catch basin under the Parkway was loaded with silt and sand. So there were several such instances that the state needed to do some maintenance on. Again, I'm in agreement with what Laura Pooley had to say on her email of March 12. I've been working here along with Laura for the past 21 years. And as you all know, Laura's been here, I'm not quite sure how long, but I believe it's somewhere between 30 and 40 years. So again, I've worked hand in hand with her on many, many projects. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Michael. And with permission of the chair, we'll like to turn the presentation over to Jason Williams, who will pick up where we were when the hearing hit the curfew at the last meeting two weeks ago. Thank you. Jason?
Sure, I'm going to share my screen really quickly here. Too many things open up here, let's see where it is. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Great, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. Again, my name is Jason Williams. I'm a licensed landscape architect in Connecticut with SLR, formerly Mylone &amp; Mac Broome. During the last meeting, I was cut off. And I just want to briefly go through and touch on some of the things that I had spoken on and then really move into the meat of the presentations. So I was brought on board on this project to analyze the view sheds and any potential impacts that this project would have on the Merritt Parkway as a corridor and a preserved corridor. So if you can remember during my last presentation, I kind of walked through the geographical expression of the Merritt Parkway from east to west, going up and down, hitting lowlands where we have off-ramps, where views really open up throughout the Merritt Parkway. And along these areas, we do have a lot of buildings. There are nine buildings that are located either next to the Merritt Parkway off-ramps or adjacent to, ranging from 55,000 square feet to 260,000 square feet, that range from everything from hospitals to office buildings. And there are an additional eight properties that are directly adjacent to the Parkway that are pretty highly visible, which I'm going to touch on. So heading northbound, Stamford Merritt Parkway, exit 35 is really where the off-ramps open up and we get, we see a bunch of development. As we head north, in Norwalk, one of the really biggest openings, Main Street and Route 7, where really you can see expansive views to the north of Merritt River Apartments and office buildings, as well as to the south. In Westport, Merritt Parkway, exit 42, we've got this expansive opening of the YMCA. In Fairfield, Merritt Parkway, exit 46 and 47, we've got 200,000 square foot Yale outpatient center and then Sacred Heart's 123,000 square foot arena, which was just approved. In Trumbull, Merritt Parkway, exit 48, is a recent project, Trumbull 10, which is a 202-unit apartment complex, which is very visible from the Parkway. Here's an image, you can see the Trumbull 10 apartment buildings are 280 feet from the Merritt Parkway. As we continue northbound, Trumbull Merritt Parkway and Route 8 interchange, the Marriott Hotel just adjacent to the Parkway is very visible, as well as Trumbull Corporate Park and Avalon Stratford, the 130-unit complex. The Avalon Stratford project is 96 feet from the Merritt Parkway edge. Our project is actually 150 feet. So this project, our project lies just in between the distance of Avalon Stratford and 10 Trumbull. And then, if you can remember, as I mentioned last time, heading southbound across the Husatonic in Shelton, Stratford Merritt Parkway, exit 53 presents the gateway to the Merritt Parkway with not only Sikorsky, but the entire hillside of this valley that is completely lit up at night with Ornate Village and Stratford Hilton. So there are a lot of architectural structures along the Merritt Parkway that one can see. So for our project, Merritt Parkway, as you can see, is heading from left to right and you can see our site just here to the left, just across from the Hi Ho Motel. And one of the things that we want to identify is that there are only three main options for the user who's driving either northbound or southbound to see our building. Now, one of the interesting things that you don't see in a lot of areas is this large vegetated buffer that, you know, moves between the off-ramps and the exits down to 58 and the Merritt Parkway. And so these buffers make up a substantial vegetative screen from looking northbound and southbound. So starting northbound, as we're heading down the Hill to Merritt Parkway, you really only have one view possibly that you'd be able to see the site. And it's trying to peek down through the on-ramp. As you're crossing over the bridge of 58, you have another view. And then heading southbound, you have the potential for another view to view the site. Let's start northbound in orange. As you're heading down the Parkway, you really have one opportunity as you're moving, whether sitting in traffic or flying down the Merritt Parkway at 75 miles an hour, to get a glimpse of the building. Over on the right here, you can see the immense amount of vegetation that obscures the site, which is back in this area here. Heading southbound, just coming again down before you get off exit 44, the existing buffer between the off-ramp going down to 58 and the Merritt Parkway provides an immense amount of screening. Not only are there oaks, which, you know, deciduous foliage, but oaks do keep on their leaves late into the fall, but there are eastern white pines within this area. And as you know, coming off exit 44 doesn't lead you right to 58, you then have to take a left to get down to 58. So northbound, southbound, approaching the area, there's no way that you are going to see our site. But there is one location that you will be able to see the site. And this is as you're heading southbound, approaching the existing overpass, you will be provided a glimpse potentially of the building. Now that being said, the image on the left is what the user experience of the driver is. The driver's heading southbound at a minimum of 55 miles per hour, moving over this bridge span of 50 feet. The driver has .62 seconds, so under one second, of peripheral vision that they'd be able to catch a glimpse of the proposed development. Because, as you can see here, we've got really thick brush and small trees that are growing and hanging over into this area. On the right-hand side is an image with a clear view of the project. The only way that you would be able to see this view is if you got out of your car and walked on this bridge and stood looking north, you would see a clear view. But we know that, you know, based on the Merritt Parkway, there'd be no pedestrian ever on this side of the bridge. Now, the view shed of, the view sheds of the Merritt Parkway and as they pertain to the Landscape Master Plan for the Merritt Parkway, which I'll get into in a sec, are really based on the Merritt Parkway as a corridor. And this is really important because the conf- And this is really important because the confines of the preservation for the Merritt Parkway is delineated by the right-of-way. Nowhere in the Landscape Master Plan or the original plans for the Merritt Parkway do they identify any preservation for view sheds beyond the right-of-way. And in fact, in the Landscape Master Plan, they identify two main elements of the user experience. One, spatial sequence. As a driver moving through the Merritt Parkway, the design's intent is to create strong enclosures, moderate enclosures, park-like enclosures, and open enclosures within the right-of-way. There is also a visual sequence as you're moving through the Merritt Parkway. Again, going up, going down, areas that are open, areas that are closed, framed views, leading or terminating views, and long views and vistas within the right-of-way corridor. The Landscape Master Plan was prepared by Mylone and MacBroom. And the project manager from our company, Vince McDermott, and I went back and reviewed the master plan to identify if there were any visual impacts that this project would have on the preservation of, of the Merritt Parkway. And so I took out some of the, or the most important elements, the proposed elements for the Merritt Parkway, and I'd just like to share them with you very briefly. In the lower left-hand corner here, you can see exit 44 and Route 58 heading north. And the Merritt Parkway identifies, or the master plan identifies some major, some important things. As you're heading northbound, the plan wants to create long views as you come down past the curve, which has been done, if you could see in the upper right-hand corner, evergreen tree plantings create this long vista that is really, you know, desired as part of the plan. The median is another element, park-like curves, which are maintained, screening of the commuter parking lot. And then what's interesting is they identify the visibility of the hotel. Nowhere in the document is it identified that this is a negative impact. Additionally, the Landscape Master Plan, staying within the confines of the right-of-way, identify median treatments. In the upper left here, you can see probably when I was a young boy, there was a berm in the center median, which then a proposed wood guardrail was, was proposed as part of the master plan, and that has been installed. Now, the proposed elements within this area are very, very specific, and I'd just like to go through them very briefly. So here, heading north, we've got Route 58. From the left to the right, the Merritt Parkway are off-ramps and on-ramps. So as you're coming, heading northbound, before you get off of the exit, the master plan identifies the exposure of rock cuts, which is really interesting because they do that on the southern side and the northern side of the Merritt Parkway. And if you can remember during the last presentation, the rock ledge exposure was brought up. This is actually something desirable that the master plan wants to expose. Coming down along the, the off-ramp here on, heading to 58, the master plan identifies creating a park-like setting. And on the northern side, identifying an existing stone wall that should be proposed. And then on the northeastern side of the Merritt Parkway, Parkway, where I previously had mentioned, the dense screening of white pines. Again, creating, opening this up to a park-like setting, which was never done. But then also creating terminating views, which was done. As you're heading southbound, you immediately are shut off from your views with the evergreens and your focus stays straight in front of you as you cross the bridge and head up the roadway. This is a cross-section that was submitted. I'm sure everybody has had a chance to look at it, and I just wanted to touch on this very briefly. This is the comparative height analysis of existing building at 4180 Black Rock Turnpike was submitted on March 22, 2021. And what, excuse me, what this shows is height comparisons between the existing Hi Ho motel and our building. Now, this is not a view shed. Why is this not a view shed diagram? One, because this is two-dimensional. It's impossible, this is actually a cross-section, so you could imagine cutting right through the Merritt Parkway and the bridge abutments, and you've got this two-dimensional image. But it doesn't identify the 3D perspective, which is essentially what a view shed is made up of. It's the curvature of our eyeballs and how we see space in a 3D plane. This is purely 2D. Why is that important? It's important because you don't know the height of the viewer. I could say, well, I'm maybe standing on the bridge in this view, or I'm way up in the air like a drone at the same elevation of the Hi Ho motel. So while this is a beautifully drawn cross-section, that does identify elevations between the two buildings. It really does not identify the user experience and, and the view sheds. And with that, Chris, I'd like to turn it back to you.
Just a quick question, Jason. The, the last, the cross-section that is up on the screen now that you're referring to, that's in black and white and was submitted, I believe, yesterday, that was not submitted by us, correct?
That's correct.
And if that, in your opinion, is that depict a view shed from the Merritt Parkway?
It does not.
And the Merritt Parkway is actually shown off in the distance in this cross-section.
Because it's a two-dimensional cross-section, the viewer has no idea how far away from the Merritt Parkway we are, nor at what elevation we're viewing it.
Okay. And, Mr. Williams, I have some questions for you. You did indicate that, that your firm, Mylone MacBroom, now it's, it's changed the name, did prepare the Merritt Parkway Landscape Master Plan in 1994?
We did.
And Vince McDermott, you mentioned Vince McDermott, he was responsible, he was head of that, that plan?
He was Vince McDermott, is a certified planner and landscape architect and was the project program manager for the Landscape Master Plan.
And you, and I believe his resume is in the.
Could I just ask everyone to please mute your lines if you're not speaking? It should only be limited to Attorney Smith and, and the witness. Thank you.
And, Mr. Williams, when you said Mr. McDermott's a certified planner, he's certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, AICP?
That's correct.
And I just have a few closing questions for you relative to the proposal and the Merritt Parkway and its master plan, in particular, the Landscape Master Plan. In your opinion, professional opinion, in your firm's professional opinion, is there going, does this proposal, will it result in an adverse impact to the Merritt Parkway Landscape Master Plan of 1994?
No.
And in your opinion, will there be any, will the proposal result in any adverse impact to any quote historic preservation, end of quote, component associated with the Merritt Parkway?
No.
And in your opinion, will this proposed residential development adversely impact the Merritt Parkway in any form, in any form, excuse me? Jason?
No, other than drivers are gonna be leaving the building and going on the Merritt Parkway.
And in your, your professional opinion, will the proposal result in an adverse impact to a substantial public interest?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do appreciate your, your efforts in preparing this view shed analysis and overall analysis of the Parkway and explaining the, the plan and the fact that the, the vistas and view sheds are within the corridor, the 300-foot corridor of the Merritt Parkway and do not expand beyond its boundaries. Mr. Chairman, with that, what I'd like to do.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith, I, I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation, but I have a question of the chair. I have a question, well, I did, I apologize. But I have a question for the chair, and I was unable to get online to ask the question following the chair's initial comments. And my only question is for the chair is whether the public will have an opportunity to address the soil borings report that was submitted by the applicant following the close of the last session of the public hearing.
No, I had not planned on reopening public comment.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, we certainly would have no objection to that once we finish our rebuttal. If, if the chair were to, to allow that, if you decide, within your discretion. But while we're still in our rebuttal, if I may, what I'd like to do is turn the presentation over to my client, Mr. Paul Richter, who has a few comments that he'd like to share with the commission at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Paul Richter. I am a lifelong resident of Fairfield with offices on Black Rock Turnpike and the owner of 4185 Black Rock Turnpike. Some of you might remember me as I've been before you with applications to develop this property before. When I first got involved over a decade ago, there were serious wetland violations going on there. And because, among other things, the owners of the nursery had improperly dumped 15,000 cubic yards of wood chip. I removed those wood chips in order the direction of inland wetland director Tom Stanky. I also removed an old, restored and installed numerous land plantings and gave the town a large conservation easement to protect all of this in perpetuity. I also came before this with two zoning applications. At the time, area hospitals were looking for large, new space to bring outpatient services closer to the communities they served. The first application was for a 35,000 square foot medical building, which was, which passed wetlands, but was denied by the planning and zoning commission. That tenant and the associated tax revenue went to Trumbull. I then came to the commission with another tenant and a smaller 25,000 square foot medical building, which this commission ultimately approved. Mr. Green, however, appealed that decision, and while the appeal was impending, Governor Malloy managed to pass a $400 million hospital tax. We won the appeal on the merits of our case, but lost the tenant due to the hospital tax. While all of this was going on, as some of you probably remember, the owners of the plant factory were struggling to keep their business going. They were no longer maintaining the property or the structures, and a light complaint was issued. I found myself acting as liaison between the plant factory owners and the Fairfield Building Department, and even made several repairs for them, but ultimately buildings needed to come down, compared to what you see today. So here I am again with another application that addresses a real need in town. This time a residential application that directly addresses our dire need to provide housing alternatives for our workforce, young professionals, the elderly and others who find themselves unwilling or unable to afford or manage a single-family home. I'm certain my experts have adequately addressed the concerns raised. In prior applications, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy asked that we provide additional plantings on state property, and we agreed, as long as they could obtain permission from DOT for us to do so. I'm willing to do the same with this application. Merritt 44 is an attractive building set against a hillside on a commercial corner that will certainly be far more attractively landscaped post-construction than it is now or ever has been in decades. I ask that you most weight in decision-making on Fairfield's need for workforce housing. I hope you believe, as I do, that this is the right project, in the right location, presented at the right time, and that you approve it at your next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paul. For the record, Chris Smith, Mr. Chairman, I have two quick comments. And one is that the storm event that Mr. Petrola was referencing, that was in the record, there was a photograph of, of that, was in 2018. And just also for clarification, that the, the process with the soil borings and whatnot not only was to the satisfaction of your town engineer, Laura Poole, but also is the standard procedure that's utilized in a land use application process in your town with those additional work occurring post-approval before building permit is issued. And again, as your town engineer has indicated, most importantly, she's satisfied with that. Before I have my closing comments, Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions for anybody in our team, we're more than happy to respond to them. And, and then I just have a few, few comments that I'd like to make.
Sure. I see Commissioner Noonan, and I have Braun, then Francis. Okay, Commissioner Noonan?
All right. Thank you, Attorney Smith. Mr. Trinkus has provided a letter to our commission dated March 22, 2021. And it looks like he has outlined a protocol, one through 12. I was just wondering if your side had a chance to review it, if they had any comments on it in reaction to, response to it.
Commissioner Noonan, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I am done. Thank you.
Commissioner Noonan, yes, I think Mr. Petrola can respond to that, but I think is, I, I think he may have indicated, I may have missed it, that, again, the procedure that's been utilized here is the same procedure that's utilized in any land use application. And again, I would like to remind the commission, I was going to in my closing, that this is the same water, same stormwater quality management system in the, basically the same location that was approved with the medical office building by the commission. But if Mr. Petrola would like to respond further, or Paul, I see Mr. Richter is there still?
In comparison to what we, would you say is normal the case? Is it too restrictive? Is it a different standard? Is it anything? I just would like a little clarity on that.
Just looking for Mr. Petrola.
This is Mike, this is Mike Petrola from Huntington Company. Let's see if I can get on.
We can hear you.
Okay. Oh, that's the bad letter. Two letters by Trinkus, I think it was 22 and 23rd. Again, what I told you a short while ago is, I pointed out to Laura Poole's email. Laura Poole's email says the standard of what she allows is listed in her, in her email of, of March 12. She's been here not quite 40 years probably, but over 30. And I've worked with her for at least 20, well, 21 years I've been here. And this is the same methodology that we've used on many, many, many projects in town.
Is this methodology that's, again, I mean, if you haven't had a chance to, you know, really dive into it, that's fine. This was dated March 22. But, you know, here we have, you know, somewhat of a battle of the experts and we're, and I know, I understand Ms. Poole's position and your reliance upon it. But in looking at this, this letter, first he's saying it's insufficient, insufficient information to show that this underground detention system complies with Connecticut DEP 2004 Stormwater Quality Manual, and then again, this 12-step protocol. I mean, if you haven't had a chance to review it, that's, that's fine. Then, as I said, it was only a day or so ago, but aside from general statements, is what is, is there anything that you disagree with in that correspondence? Is not needed or different or anything?
Some of it goes above and beyond, but as I say, we, what we do here in town, we, and again, that Laura said, we, we conform to the state standards, and I have to go along with Laura. She's been reviewing plans here for, for almost forever.
And, Mr. Noonan, if I may, Chris Smith, for the record, in, in course. And Mr. Noonan, if I may, Chris Smith, for the record, in in course, in communication today with Jason Spaff, Mike Petrola, this is the in addressing just what you're talking about, this late letter that came in from Mr. Trinkus, that the methodology that has been utilized by my client and the engineering team is the same methodology that they use on all their projects, I'll say, all their site development proposals in the town. And it's consistent with what your town engineer has required. So I think, just to speak a little bit on behalf of Mr. Petrola, but I know in this, you know, with communications with Jason a little earlier, everything that they've done up to this point in time is standard. It's what they've done all the time. And they've actually done these borings at the request of the opposition, Mr. Trinkus, which they typically wouldn't have done at this point. That would have been done later when they went to install it. So then they confirmed again that there's more than three feet separation that would accommodate the stormwater system. And that was, if you recall, I specifically asked Mr. Trinkus that question, if there is three feet of separation, does that comply with the DEP guidelines? And he said yes. And of course-
And I think I asked the same question.
Just so you know, you did. You didn't. And I I was, I missed that meeting, but I saw that question in the video replay.
Um, just, I guess, a follow-up then. And I'm not, it has to do with his statement that is insufficient insufficient information for the manual that he cites. Do you believe sufficient information has been provided, or that this the manual that he cites is above and beyond the the norm, or is some other answer that I'm not considering?
No, I'm very familiar with with the guidelines and the manual. I'm very, I've had experience with this particular engineer making these claims. And I think that if you were talking to most engineers in the state, they would tell you that the DEP, the DEP 2004 Guidelines for Stormwater Management are guidelines. And they they make recommendations on how an engineer may employ different methods to address different issues. And sometimes they can be hybrids of combinations of those different methods. But they are guidelines that are there. It is the position of the Huntington Company that the proposal does comply, does comply with the 2004 guidelines. And it's not necessary to do these additional items that Mr. Trinkus is calling for at this point. And actually, again, we went out and did the borings. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that that's kind of where I needed, that was kind of the answer I was waiting for. But thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bronn.
I'm referring back to both the Trinkus report, where he's concerned that adequate borings were not taken to provide enough information as in conjunction with the wetlands permit, which I believe you rely on the wetland permit from 2010, because that was from an old, you could probably clarify this, but my understanding is there's an application for a medical building, you know, 10 years ago. Things happened. And when they went back with a new plan for this development, the argument was a new wetland permit was not would not be needed because it wasn't changed enough from the medical building. The commission disagreed, and they denied it. And then that was appealed. And then ultimately that was settled this year in 2020, where the the wetlands permit that you're using is 10 years old. Is that my, is that correct generally in summary?
That the, yes. And if you recall that, and I don't know if anybody served on a wetlands commission, but wetlands commissions or your conservation wetlands commission does regulate the regulated activities associated with a development. And when we went back to the wetlands commission this last go around, and don't hold me to the date, Commissioner Bronn, but it might have been at the end of 19, beginning of 20. And we came back with this proposal and demonstrated, we thought that the regulated activities associated with this proposal are substantially and materially the same. And as you know, that's the legal standard that you have to demonstrate. And I know the last go around before that, they had agreed with us. But this time, when it was changed to residential, initially, they said no. And and then they made a determination. I don't recall if we provided additional information, but it was resolved where they did find ultimately that the regulated activities associated with what's before you this evening are the same that they approved, you're correct, in the site development proposal that was in 2010. And we generated wetland testimony and evidence from wetland consultants, two of them actually, demonstrating from a wetlands perspective, nothing has changed with the property, and that the activities that are proposed with this development, which were minimal, some there's some activity in the upland review area. And if the vernal pool and the wetlands are actually, most of them are up gradient of the site, that they felt it was it was the same, substantial material the same, and therefore, they they approved it. And then after that, we did come to this this commission. So that that permit is valid for a certain period of time. And I don't want to give a date because I may be wrong.
So I understand cases settle for a variety of reasons, and the lawsuit was settled. So therefore, the original permit is the one that you're using from 2010. But from my reading of the staff recommendation from the wetlands administrator from the from about a year ago, 2020, the staff felt that things can change in 10 years. Certain wetlands and watercourses have not really been identified, maybe that had developed over the prior 10 years. There was a problem with detention and drainage design, protection of the off-site vernal pool and wetlands, and other things related to the steepness of the site. So I guess my concern is if you add in what the staff's concerns were, and again, anyone who's done litigation knows cases settle for a variety of reasons. It doesn't mean that the concerns are not there. If you add that with the lack of thoroughness of the test borings, that raises a concern with me over whether the soil that is that has been filled after the fact over the bedrock would be adequate for drainage purposes.
Well, again, most of the wetlands are up gradient. And that was Annette Jacobson, who provided that report. We did have, we retained the services of Michael Klein, works with Eric Davison, a fairly conservative wetland scientist. And we also retained the services of Chris Allen. I don't recall if he was, I think he was, we did retain him, and he's with Lantec. And I don't know if you know either one of those three people I just mentioned. They're all very well respected, and they reviewed the site, and they were of the opinion that nothing had changed. And there was, and they wanted, and they looked specifically at those concerns that Annette had articulated. And quite frankly, there was a meeting at the site with Annette early on with both of those gentlemen, and they had reviewed that. So I don't know what the sequence was with the information being provided. But ultimately, the commission did change its position. There was that information that was, we didn't do it without having expert testimony generated to establish that. And the the stormwater system, again, is in essentially the exact same location. It's it's in essentially, I'm going to say, the same location as the one that was approved by this commission and your town engineer had proved as well. I know she doesn't ultimately approve the site development back with this medical office.
So the case, I believe, was resolved because it was determined that the town could not require a new permit because the footprint or whatever wasn't different enough from the prior permit from 10 years earlier. That does not change the fact that the things could have changed over 10 years. So regardless of who what expert said what, I'm looking at a 16-page report by the Town of Fairfield Conservation Staff, and you're talking to your experts. And that's never really been fleshed out, as far as I know, because the case settled, right? In other words, it was determined, or I guess there was a concern that, you know, settlements are voluntary, obviously, and you don't have a trial, and you didn't go back and get a new permit. A permit was not required. So the old permit is the one that's active, and that does not deal with any changes that could have happened over the next 10 years that were recognized perhaps by the town expert. That's just my concern right now.
Well, and it's a good concern and good question. And again, maybe I'm not being clear. The those concerns were articulated by Ms. Jacobson, and we retained, and Michael Klein had been the wetland scientist there from day one, is my understanding. We retained two wetland scientists to verify that there hasn't been any change. And I think based on that, in part, that the commission realized that there hadn't been a change. And so they agreed to find that this proposal, regulated activities associated with this proposal, because that's what's regulated, it's not the footprint, the regulated activities are substantially the same as that those that were associated with the 2010 approval. So that's what we used as a baseline when we came to this question. We didn't change. The regulated activities were minimal. And Annette brought those issues up, and we had Michael Klein, and again, Chris Allen, I mean, two very good people, went out and confirmed that they went, looked at what Annette asked them to look at.
Thank you.
And I know, I don't believe Annette, you know, was, I know, and, you know, Annette Jacobson and Tom Stanky have been there forever. I don't think Annette was a wetland scientist. I don't think she was. But that doesn't mean that she hadn't served the town and was your wetlands assistant director there for, you know, as long as I'm practicing law, I think. Because I remember Tom was there when I first started. But anyway, so that, no, we did not ignore that. The wetlands commission did not ignore that. That report was addressed by expert testimony in having having that submitted to the commission. You have part of the information that's that you're not, you don't have what what the reports that were submitted, that we submitted, the applicant submitted, Commissioner Bronn. So I'm just trying to do that to alleviate some of those concerns.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Francis, you were next.
Basically, I was going to ask what Commissioner Noonan did. These tests that are referred to in Mr. Trinkus's letter, they have not been performed. It's not just that he doesn't have access to them. You didn't, your experts said they did not need to be performed to this level.
Oh, not at this point, Commissioner Francis. That would be done. My understanding is when you're pulling a building permit, just like quite a bit of work gets done in the plans, a lot of detail gets added for the for that. If you recall, Mr. Trinkus wanted us to confirm his his concern legitimate, and and your town engineer said it was a legitimate concern, was that there would not be sufficient soil, that three-foot separation between infiltration components, right, the infiltrator components and any bedrock. So that's why my client went out, even though it's not typically done at this point in time, in the in the planning and zoning process, and went out and took borings in the locations where to show and demonstrate to this commission, and it was signed off by your town engineer, that there is indeed more than three foot of separation in that would accommodate the stormwater system. Now, we're hearing additional things that are supposed to happen. But again, there that would happen, if at all, when the building permit is secured. So we disagree with Mr. Trinkus that it's required. And I think you've heard from Mr. Petrola, in the decades that Huntington Company and your town engineer have been working together with you as the Planning and Zoning Commission for Fairfield and your predecessors on this commission, they've done and gone beyond what's done typically with any application.
Yeah, thank you.
And these tests will be required for the building permit, or they may be required?
I would have to defer to Michael. I don't want to, I don't want to convey anything that's not as accurate as I can possibly be for you, Commissioner Francis. Michael?
They they will be required. I think Laura mentions that in her email to the commission through Jim Went. They will be required.
But they're not done now.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Other questions from the commission, other commissioners? Yep, Commissioner Bremen.
Thank you. Attorney Smith, could you address the legal impact or analysis of the effect of the the development on the viewshed of the Merritt Parkway, the historic Merritt Parkway?
I was going to do that in my closing, Commissioner. But if you want me to do that now, I mean, that was going to be one of the main components of my my conclusion. I can go into that as soon as we're done with the other questions. I'm more than happy to do that, or I can do it now. But-
Don't let me, don't let me get you out of order, attorney.
You know, I get out of sync, and, you know, one of those high-type fastball comes in, and it throws me all off for the next pitch. But whatever you want, I can either do it now, or I can, I can do it as soon as we get the last question in, if you'd like.
Other commissioners-
However you want to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, other commissioners have any other questions for Attorney Smith? Commissioner Bronn?
Am I allowed to, and this is, I don't know who this is for, Jim or Chairman Wagner? If I found this staff report somewhere Google, you know, looking on the town website, can I submit that in there so I can discuss it when we deliberate? That as a commissioner?
I I don't think that you need to submit a staff report from the Conservation Commission. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I don't think it's in the record for this hearing. And it is, has a lot of information in it about the parcel of land, about the concerns with the drainage and the water. And it also has an old report from Ms. Pooley. I mean, the the water and the drainage and the lack of borings was a problem a year ago, and it's still an issue now. It has a great deal of detail about the underlying characteristics characteristics of this parcel of land, which I think is helpful.
Right. So that's fine. You know what? Email it to Mr. Went, circulated to the rest of the commissioners. It could be part of the file. But I will say this, and as a cautionary tale, you know, we're not here to relitigate the Conservation Commission's grant of a permit or approval of this plan, or a continuation of their permit or approval of the the prior plan, or their determination that the the activity being proposed to be conducted under this plan is substantially similar to that of a prior plan. This is not the Wetlands and Conservation Commission. All right. So please, you know, email it to Mr. Went. Mr. Went, make it a part of the record. We can certainly talk about it. But, you know, I think that we should spend another evening in this application discussing the decisions of another town agency on this application.
Thank you. So I have just a couple of quick questions for Attorney Smith. When you mention that this is workforce housing, I can't find that term in the 8-30G statute. Is that a term of art, or is that a legal term that somehow elevates the nature of the of the of the housing from regular formal to workforce?
Well, if you've been paying any attention to what's going on in Connecticut with desegregate Connecticut, and I think you had somebody from the Alliance speak at the meeting, there, those are just expressions for what qualifies as affordable under section 830G, whether it's housing opportunities, equity housing, or workforce housing. I find myself, having been doing this, I served on the Blue Ribbon Commission, the second one, and being fairly active with different professional organizations, not only our planning and zoning section, but also with the Connecticut chapter of the American Planning Association, that those expressions are used interchangeably. And as you are aware, the application has been filed consistent with section 830G.
So there's no such thing as quote workforce housing in 830G, right? It's just affordable housing, right?
Yeah, I think that's what I said, correct. And some towns actually have it in the regs. They call them housing opportunity units. I think, I forget, I think that's what you might call them, Fairfield. And other towns call them workforce. I've drafted regulations. I know you don't like them. They have been adopted by other towns, and we'll use the expression workforce housing. And workforce in it defined as complying with deed restricted and income restricted, as provided by section 830J. So it's an expression that's used for portable housing units.
So-
Under 830J, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So, comment, I guess, or question? So if it is expected that these people will be workforce people, and you have 162 bedrooms, but only 139 parking spaces, I don't know where those, where do you expect people that have two cars to park? Are they going to park at the commuter lot and walk through the bridge underneath the Merritt Parkway that has no sidewalk that floods occasionally? Where do the, there's no other place in the area for anyone to park? That might be a question for SLR or Malone and McBroom. But I can't get over that there is probably inadequate parking, and everybody's saying you will never go and try to blast into a hillside and buy the parcel next door and have more parking. But if there is a horrible need for more parking, and they can't park- But if there is a horrible need for more parking and they can't park at the high hole. I imagine they're going to park in the commuter lot and have to walk, I don't know, quarter of a mile or a tenth of a mile down the hill, under the overpass where there's no sidewalks at the commuter lot. Is that the only option there would be for overflow parking?
Well, with all due respect, these people, it's our opinion, and I think Mr. Sullivan did provide an in-depth analysis for you. It's pretty historic and time-tested that there's sufficient parking for these people that will be living in these particular units in this residential community. And I think we did put in evidence, I know I made reference to a number of other proposals that you have approved as a commission that are far less spaces per unit than what is being accommodated for here. And third and finally, I know when larger developments, multifamily came into the state years ago. And I had privilege of working for a number of different out-of-state developers that were doing it. And my prior firm represented Avalon and most of their work or much of it. The numbers weren't, more importantly, if they don't, then you don't have tenants. They don't come. That's just from a marketing standpoint. It's like having a restaurant. If you don't have parking, people aren't going to come. If you have a bank and you don't have any parking for them, they're not going to come. So there's a market-driven component. But if you would like Mr. Sullivan, Dave Sullivan, our traffic expert who provided you with a review of that. If you'd like him to revisit that, respond to your question more directly with regards to the numbers, I think David is here and certainly can do that for you, Commissioner Braun.
Well, I don't know what the source material is or how closely it relates to exactly what goes on in Fairfield. I can just tell you, everybody I know has a car or human being that lives in a house that's an adult. Unless you're saying they're retired people, just the reality, the practical reality is parking is always a problem, whoever anyone is. So I do have one more question. I would just like to sneak in and you can choose to have him respond or not. But when you mention when you mentioned that Fairfield is somehow decreasing in the affordable housing, I can't remember the exact quote. It sounded like you were talking about our ratios going down of affordable housing to total housing. Can you direct that? Because I believe we've added hundreds of units of affordable housing over the years. So how, so our affordable housing flat numbers is going up, but you're not saying that that's not happening, are you?
I'm saying that under the, as the appellate court did in one of your decisions. I was just noting that since two thousand, as the court noted, your percentage of affordable overall has gone down. And I was referring to the the list, the exemption list. Now, to your credit, with the new list, you actually went up, I think it's a small tenth of a percent point or something. But I did note that you had gone up in that with regards to whether or not you're going to qualify eventually for either moratorium. And my client, just for the record, is going to build these, will build this quickly. I know you're waiting for a lot of the ones that you've approved down by train stations and whatever to come online. And that's what you need for the points for the moratorium. I know I did the last one in Westport that pushed them over and they qualified and they were able to get their moratorium. But here, that that was the reference I was making, I made reference to. And I did it with the prior application too, because, you know, that's that's what had happened. And I know that Mr. Barnhart is, you know, making an effort and but overall, what drives and, you know, you know, what qualifies a town for an exemption under eight dash thirty G or from eight dash thirty G, however you want to look at it, is DOH determining that you have more than ten percent of your housing that qualifies and is affordable. And there's a whole laundry list of subcategories of that up to the ten percent. So my reference was that since over the years that it's actually gone down a little bit in Fairfield. And again, I took some of that from that court decision with the appellate court and then just the information that I have over the past number of years.
So to clarify, we've added to our affordable housing quantity, just the ratio might not have gone up. Because when you add total housing stock, it changes the ratio, right?
That may be, but as of the date I filed the application, I had the percentage that was in there from twenty nineteen, from the list on twenty nineteen for twenty nineteen. And as I indicated in my letter and I have it here. Compared to prior years, you had actually gone down.
Yeah, you're talking about apples and oranges, though. Because Commissioner Braun continues to ask you to acknowledge that the gross number of affordable units has gone up over the years. And then you keep answering the question by saying the percentage, and the percentage is the ratio of market rate units to affordable units. And the fact is that the number of market rate units is also increased. So when someone builds an eight thirty G and has a hundred units and thirty of them or thirty three of them are affordable. Our ratio goes up. The number of market rate units, there are six sixty seven of them. And that gets added to our our denominator. And so, you know, I'm gonna just, and I don't do this very often, but it's a bit frustrating to hear the two of you go round and round. Because neither, it just, yeah, Attorney Smith, just acknowledge, please, that the number of the gross number of affordable units in Fairfield since the year two thousand has has gone up.
I have no idea.
Then you don't know, and that's the answer to the question. And we move on.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you. Does anyone else, or Commissioner Braun, perhaps you have another question on another subject matter? But we're here in the question of answer period before Attorney Smith will sum up and conclude. Does anyone else have any other questions? All right, very good. Thank you very much. Attorney Smith?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm just trying to, I'm just giving a little thought relative to extra information coming in after being Googled. But I guess if I know what it is, and I don't think we have any issue with it, can certainly ask staff over there, acting staff to if you needed to look at anything, I suppose you could look at the reports that were certainly submitted by the applicant, by certified wetlands experts. But I'm with you. I don't, I don't think we need to relitigate the wetlands within the context of this, so.
So, so, you know, unfortunately, you feel it, you feel the need to repeat, you know, what I said for the record, specifically for that purpose. I mean, she was, Commissioner Braun was was referencing a papers from the Conservation Commission's files. And, you know, I expressly made that point for the record. I don't think it, we need to spend more time rehashing that. You know, if you have an objection, if you have an objection to that coming into the record stated. You know, the only time it's going to matter is if for some, forgive me, strange reason that becomes cited and support for some decision that you disagree with that we make. And then it becomes an issue on appeal. And so, you know, beyond that, why do we have to spend more time on it?
And I was indicating to you, I just wanted a few seconds to think about whether I wanted to object to that or not. For the commission's benefit, if I were to say I have no objection.
That's fine. And that's great. And I was going to say your your objection is noted for the record.
I don't think we have, we don't have an issue for it with your with your with your caveat that you expressed to the full commission. And I'm not going to repeat it because you've already said it.
Thank you very much.
We're set?
I have nothing further on that point, and I'm 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 hopeful you feel you're you're adequately in a position to to sum up.
And I will not get anywhere near the curfew, I promise. But thank you. First, I have a few summary points that the first is, I would like just respectfully remind the commission that the site design was prepared to follow history with this commission's prior approval of a medical office building in use of the subject property. Specifically, the access to the site and the sightlines are the same. The stormwater collection and treatment system is the same. Traffic with the proposed residential use will actually be less than that associated with the prior approved medical office use of the subject property. In addition, as with the prior approved medical office use, we have heard nothing negative about the subject proposal from the town of Fairfield's town engineer, your police chief or department, police department, or your fire marshal or fire chief. Therefore, I respectfully suggest that to deny or modify and approve, to deny or to modify and approve the proposal so that it's not financially feasible to develop as a set-aside development as provided by section eight dash thirty G would be at best suspect. Now, as to the claims made by the Merritt Parkway Conservancy issue to respond to that question, Vice Chairman. First, this nonprofit group of citizens performs a laudable, performs laudable work as, as their representative stated, a watchdog. And I say that in a positive sense. Second, the group is one of many organizations and government entities serving on the Merritt Parkway Advisory Committee, MPEC, providing advice to the state of Connecticut DOT concerning matters relative to the Merritt Parkway. That's because the Connecticut DOT manages and operates the Merritt Parkway. Third, it's important to note that neither the Commissioner of Connecticut Department of DOT, Connecticut DOT, or a representative of Connecticut DOT, nor the governor, has appeared in opposition to this proposal, which is, as you know, which which has an affordable housing component. And I'm sure that everyone at this meeting and across the state would be shocked if indeed they did. However, as to the nebulous claims made by the MPC, their legal counsel and their consultants. First, the Merritt Parkway comprises an approximate three hundred foot wide right-of-way that includes travel lanes, historic bridges and landscaping that is provided by the Merritt Parkway's master landscape plan. We've heard from, we heard from Mr. Williams about that. The right-of-way does not extend onto adjacent private land. Second, there is no reference to view sheds extending out of the right-of-way. The view sheds involve the space and views that the driver or their passengers experience when traversing the Merritt Parkway corridor in their vehicles. Third, the Merritt Parkway, the MPC, as Merritt Parkway Conservancy has failed to identify or articulate a particular component of the Merritt Parkway, either its roadway, bridges or landscaped areas that will somehow be adversely impacted by the subject residential community. That's because there is none. Fourth, even if a view shed from the Merritt Parkway onto adjacent private property constitutes a substantial public interest that restricts development of adjacent private property, that property owner would experience a regulatory taking if such were effectively employed by this commission on that basis, assuming that that it would be legal, which of course it wouldn't. And finally, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy has produced no view shed analysis, only the applicant has. More importantly, the applicant has retained the firm that developed the Merritt Parkway's controlling master landscape plan. And if I can ask Jason Williams, if you're there, if you can pull up that view shed slide in the PowerPoint. Sorry, I think I might be catching him off guard here.
Nope, I'm here.
Thank you, Jason.
Give me one second.
Now, if we can have that that one from the bridge, the view shed. There we go. Thank you. And I think it's, you can see the top two photographs. So what the record establishes on this issue is, one, the view of the subject property really only occurs at one location. You're looking at it. And this is when you're traveling south and crossing the Merritt Parkway Bridge over Black Rock Turnpike. Two, this view is limited to less than one second when traveling at fifty five miles per hour, which we know really occurs in the Merritt Parkway. And three, the view is of a residential community with an affordable housing component, not an asphalt plant. That's not being proposed. It's a residential community. So in closing, I ask the commission this question. Assuming that there is a substantial public interest of some sort being adversely impacted by someone viewing this residential community from the Merritt Parkway. Does this view that you're looking at for less than one second clearly outweigh the need for affordable housing? Should have said that, that's in quotes. I respectfully submit that it doesn't. And absent this, you cannot deny the proposal or per section eight dash thirty G modify and approve the proposal. This threshold is required to be satisfied before you can, per section eight dash thirty G, require, quote, reasonable changes, end of quote, to the proposal. And of course, changes or conditions can't be required that have a, quote, substantial adverse impact on the viability, end of quote, of the proposal, which simply effectuates an impermissible denial in the guise of an approval. Therefore, on behalf of Mr. Richter and our team, we do thank you for your service on the commission and your time and consideration in processing this application. We hope that you are mindful of the need for this housing product, not only for the citizens of Fairfield, but also in our state. And we respectfully request that you approve this proposal without modifications that will adversely affect the viability of this needed housing for the citizens of Fairfield in our state. And please, when it comes to the issues with the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. I mean, this is what you know, you judge whomever are going to be looking at, does that for less than one second outweigh the need for twenty nine affordable units, affordable units under eight dash thirty G for persons or families at the eighty and sixty percent median income levels in our state? And again, I respectfully suggest that it doesn't. And again, thank you for your time and we respectfully request that you act favorably upon the application as submitted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission.
Thank you very much, Attorney Smith. Appreciate the the time and and the detail. And with that, I will close the public hearing on these two items. And we will move on to our our next items. Thank you, Attorney Smith and all of your.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stay safe all. Thank you.
I will call the next two items on our agenda. They are related for our public hearing. It's a zoning regulation amendment, application of fifteen Unco Road LLC to amend sections twelve and twenty eight of the zoning regulations. And item number four, fifteen Unco Road, special permit application of fifteen Unco Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a mixed-use commercial and residential building in the Center Design Business District. I believe I have Attorney Attorney Rizio taking the microphone. Attorney Rizio, we cannot hear you. You're on mute, I think. Still, still see you. Yes.
Well, thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. It's really appreciate being before you tonight. Chairman, I heard your introductory comments with regard to the the way you would like to see this proceed. And I will try and, my understanding is like, we'll just basically go through our text amendment first. Stay away from our site plan and the specific application with regard to fifteen Unco Road, rather than having them intertwine and kind of mix one with the other and try and conclude our text amendment applications before moving on to a special permit, the special permit section and the the specific application site plan and the everything that goes with that.
That's fine. That's fine with me. If you want to treat them, you know, very distinctly and separately in that manner. No worries at all. Now, do you want to, because we can, I mean, and frankly, you can, you can dictate this if you like. There, these are two separate applications and, you know, typically we have called the related applications together. And we've had one presentation by the applicant of all of their matters. And then public comment and then the rebuttal. Now, if you want.
Read them both together.
And so that's my point. And so if you if you would like to, I mean, literally separate them and have application for the text amendment, public comment, rebuttal, close the public hearing on that item. And then application on the special permit, public comment, and then rebuttal and close the hearing on that item. You know, that's that's your your prerogative. I'm not dictating one way or the other.
Okay, that was my misunderstanding then. What I'd like to do is if they can both be read together. I will spend a good portion of tonight just going through our text amendment. We may be able to use, since it's read into the record, we may be able to use some some exhibits by way of example as to reasons why a text amendment would be there or not. And then we can get into the specific location. And this way, at least we'll only, we don't have to do. And this way, at least we'll only, we don't have to do the repetitive opening, closing of the public hearing, public comment questions. We can kind of tie everything together because I think typically when I've done these people of the two tend to get interrelated.
Yep, and and I agree, and and I think that that is that is just fine. So I call them together, and so you can proceed and however you'd like to break up that time. It's a prerogative.
Chairman, members of the commission, I'm really happy to be before you tonight, representing fifteen Uncle Road LLC and its principal Dr. Lee Forrest. I'll give you a little bit of history as to how this kind of developed. Dr. Forrest and his family historically have owned this property, a property of fifteen Uncle Road. For over a hundred years, it's been in his family. He's patiently been watching as the and and really watched the over the over his entire lifetime, actually living on the property, has watched the post road be transformed, watched the downtown be transformed, watched the evolution of restaurants, the the desire to live downtown, the ability for people to work 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 near where they where they to work near where they live, the ability of people to work close to transit, and the evolution of your regulations and your and your and your and your goals through a plan of content and development. We've been working with Dr. Forrest for a few years. We waited, in fact, it started coming to us before you in, I believe, in October nineteen, October two thousand nineteen, you got your plan of continue plan of development for the TOD study. And we waited for the results of that because we didn't want to propose something that would be in direct conflict of what the commission found. I believe you you received it or the the committee finished it in October two thousand and March two thousand nineteen. And I believe that in October two thousand nineteen, October fifteenth, I think it was, this commission adopted the study. So that led us to review, what can we do with this site? This site is the site, the site that we talked about originally was the Las Vegas. If you know, it's the property where there's Las Vegas. There's a barber there out the back. There's so small. So there's retail across the street. There's some, there was a yoga studio in there before COVID, which basically put the yoga studio out of your business. Then you had a garage in the back, a small house in the back, and a doctor's office in the back. It was just a myriad of of uses on this property. And we felt the property was very underserved. The property was very undeveloped and that the that site such as in town on Uncle Road, backing up to Sanford Street, close to the corner of the post road, deserves some kind of of a of a real mixed-use property. And and also, it's got very unique topography. And it all will work in into a program that John Geddes, who was our designer, looked into. John is very was very significantly involved in their whole redevelopment of the Shelton Rudder Front. And and a lot of it's downtown. And very good with regarding reusing properties and filling and using infill properties. So as you mentioned in your TOD, is that these infill properties were going to need to be redeveloped because most of all the post road and months of your downtown center business district design, the center design business district is all really fully developed. And when I say fully developed, it's not developed to its potential. But all your square, all from side to side, all your square footage is pretty much used, and there really isn't much in the way of vacant land. So we took a look at your permitted uses and in the in the design center, in the center design business. And then we took your TOD, Fairfield TOD study, and we use that as your, as our base to develop a property. And hopefully, I think we were probably doing is getting a head start on what will be the future change of your regulations in any event. Because the changes, each of the changes that we're suggesting to the Center Design Business District are reflected in your downtown station land use and development policy recommendations. So if I can take you to, Chris, if you can, Chris Russo's my partner here is with me tonight, and he is going to control the screen. If Emmeline, is that best to have Chris control the screen?
Perfectly fine. He knows what he's doing.
Okay. It's a good, it's a good thing I'm not on there. We might be watching TV, some kind of TV show. So this is basically the start of our of our our the changes that we're requesting. As you can see, we start in section twelve point zero, and it's twelve point three sixteen, point sixteen. And it talks about residential uses. Currently state that they are shall only be shall not be located on the ground floor and shall not exceed more than fifty percent of the total floor area of a building. And no building of mixed residential business shall contain more than two stories devoted to residential use. And each building shall have minimum floor area. We're going to have seven hundred and fifty feet. Chris, if you can put now, let's bring up, we'll do it item by item. Why don't we go to back to your back to the TOD? So if we go to the TOD, one of the recommendations is currently residential uses in the CBD are provided are not located on a ground floor, do not exceed fifty percent of the floor area, occupy no more than two stories. This commission found and your committee found that the town should continue to require non-residential uses on the ground floor of the buildings in a CDBD. We agree with that. Similar, the other restrictions on upper floor residential floor area inhibit the development of mixed-use buildings with retail dining or other permitted uses on the ground floor and three floors of residential uses above. Removing this restriction will enable more infill development in the downtown station area and add additional housing options serving town needs. For example, that you'll hear about us later in our proposal, we have an air, we would like to preserve the full retail section along Uncle Road and then continue on a second floor with office, but then have between two and three floors of residential apartments. But maintaining the character of the retail along Uncle Road or the post road, which is really the area where this downtown station land use works. So this is a hundred percent consistent with what this commission looked at and adopted. So we we require, we ask that in this instance, section twelve point three point one six will remove the fifty percent of the total floor area of the building be only be devoted to residential and that the residential not contain more than three stories of residential use. All of this I'll tie in as we go later, but I thought figure one by one, I'd like to take you through the reasoning behind it, which is the committee's reasoning. And we fully support and have designed a project consistent with this. First, why don't we move to the next section, which is height? So basically, in the CBD, let's just call the center design district. In the center design district, you are currently allowed to have five stories of livable floor area or fifty feet, provided any ground floor, and that's it. Five stories or fifty feet. We would like to make the change to go to four stories of livable floor area or fifty-five feet, provided any ground floor story has a minimum height of fifteen feet. What's important about this is the idea is to keep that retail portion. Let's, Chris, let's go to the TOD because I'd rather go back to the commission's own findings and the committee's own findings and dealing with the with our height. So let's go back to land use policy. So as you see, the findings were very basically, it said, currently, the underlying center district allows for five-story buildings or total of fifty feet, whichever is less. In practice, the modern construction techniques and desirable of total ground floor areas to accommodate retail and dining space, this means that buildings will not achieve five stories. So the 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 idea was to modify the height limit and cap it at four stories and ensure that the ground floor be at least fifteen feet to give it a much more dramatic area. For example, you have on fifteen Uncle Road, you have a a movie theater next door. You have the ability to to basically bring a grander type of look rather than to the first floor where people are passing by retail-wise. They can walk in and they don't feel like, you know, apartments are directly over their head. It 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 gives a presence to itself. What we what we we did, we had actually asked for fifty-five feet. So our our changes in the regulations say, we agree, we would like to see the center design district be reduced to four stories of livable area. However, we put the the height at fifty-five feet. We would have no problem if the commission would adhere to their own restrictions and put fifty-two feet. And I'll explain why.
When you say adhere to our own restrictions, you you're talking about the.
Your own recommendations, the committee's own recommendations.
Correct. Thank you.
I apologize. I'm just I'm kind of looking at you guys as we've all looked at this before. We've all thought it was a good idea. We've all accepted.
I understand. I just don't want there to be any confusion that you're referencing some specific regulations as opposed to recommendations.
Hundred percent. Sorry about that, Chairman. I'll try and be clear.
No problem.
And it basically, so we would like to reduce from five to four stories consistent with the recommendations. We would, we thought it would be important to add to fifty-five feet, which I'll explain over, and also adopt that any ground floor story have a minimum height of fifteen feet. Okay, so why the fit, why would we? The the recommendation by the commission was fifty-two feet. Go down to four stories and go to fifty-two feet. Why the increase in height? Because if you're going to have a fifteen foot, fifteen foot first floor, typically, you're looking for nine feet of nine foot high ceilings for residential apartments, which is really nice, really attractive. So you have a fifteen foot first floor. There's typically a foot between the floors for insulation and utilities and piping that takes you to sixteen feet. Then you've got nine feet that takes you to twenty-five feet. Then you have another foot that takes you to thirty feet. Then you have two more floors of ten feet, and you get easily get into the fifty to fifty-two feet when you over fifty feet when you are dealing with a fifteen foot first floor. We had asked fifty-five feet for the reason that we thought it would give you the ability to stay away from just putting it up, putting up flat roofs, although we're very comfortable with flat roofs. We'll show you a not to confuse the issue, but when we go through our presentation, we'll show you what we thought a hip roof or some kind of gabled roof would be better. And the way to do that would be to still stay at the four floors, still stay at the fifteen feet, but give some ability to add some architectural features to a roof line. We'll go through that when I show you what it means, but I just want to state for the record, this applicant would be would be comfortable, if the commission were comfortable, sticking with the recommendations in the plan. However, we think that fifty-five feet would be warranted when you talk about four stories and fifteen feet when it when it deals with architectural, we believe would be architectural improvements. So that would be our second change.
Attorney Rizio?
Yes.
Commissioner Noonan, just a small question with with respect to the height. I get the sense that, you know, fifty-five feet is your total height requesting. I see four stories of livable floor area. Do you mean if livable residential only? Or is it one retail and four stories residential?
Oh, for example, what what I what I would deem it is, for example, it'd be once, you could have one story of non-residential on the first floor, whether it be office or retail. Second floors would second two floors, two, three, four, two through four could be residential.
Yeah, I just see four stories.
There's also nothing.
I just see four stories of the.
Area. Well, they mean livable area, but probably 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 should have been occupiable area versus just livable. I think we're, I don't mean to confuse the first floor. Are you, because I think you're thinking that the first floor is liv, we're not looking to omit the first floor.
So just four stories total is what you're looking at?
Correct, four stories total. And the reason we wanted to go beyond fifty-two feet would be for architectural reasons, because when you measured a center to an E, should you do a peak to your roof? Should you do anything but a flat roof? You you would probably need more than fifty-two feet, but you're no matter what, you're limited to the four stories.
That's fine. I just see livable, and I I don't think you could get five stories and fifty-five feet, but you know, one story, four stories of livable over one retail. I don't think it works out, but the livable just caught my attention.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. If it were to make sorry, one second. Sharing a computer at home. If the commission would more would would me would mean would feel more comfortable with the word occupiable versus livable, we would be, we would be willing, we're okay with that so that there would not be any confusion that livable means that somebody could live on the first floor. We have no intention of putting any residential use on the first floor. So I think substituting livable for occup or occupiable space, if the commission's more comfortable with that, we would, we would, we would certainly feel comfortable with with the alternative words so that there was no confusion. That it was somehow be construed that you'd have.
I mean, it's a small thing. We can go for. I mean, as long as you're four stories, I think that's that can be changed.
Fifteen fifteen foot ground floor and then probably ten to twelve foot floors of that. And so three of those is, you know, thirty-six feet plus fifteen is, you know, forty-eight plus some roof line gets you to fifty, fifty-two. And I hear Attorney Rizio saying he wants fifty-five so that there can be additional architectural features. Does that sound?
Hundred percent, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to our next change. If you go to section twelve point seven point five two, we discuss total floor area. And right now, total floor area, there is a limitation that could be a floor area ratio no more than two hundred percent, basically saying that you can't have more than more than double of what your what your ground area is on the, which your square footage is on the ground. Land square footage. So, Chris, let's go to the recommendations from the TOD study. I just thought it's easier, folks, I hope, I know this is kind of laborious, but I thought it best to take it one shot at a time, go through looking at everybody's own words and and see how how consistent these changes are. So one of the recommendations was also to revise the floor area ratio. Floor ratios, as we know, is the FAR, says the FAR has a limit, FAR limit of two, where total building floor may not exceed twice the size of the parcel. Center Design Business District currently has a maximum coverage of ninety percent. So this requirement functionally means that a building developed at a maximum lot coverage can only be two stories tall, rather than the five stories currently permitted in the district or the four stories recommended. This study recommends increasing the floor area ratio to three to enable development of buildings in the three to four-story range. This scale is fully consistent with existing building scale and the goals of a walkable downtown. So all we're trying to do is have the floor area ratio match what the recommendation was in the in the in the study. And we believe that's essential, just like I said, it's consistent with which has been historically developed there. Mostly all, unfortunately, because the regulations evolved and most of these older buildings are pre-existing non-conforming because they have a hundred percent coverage and they have and 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 there's no way that you can, you can basically take the study and use the and have the current regulations worth, work with the findings of this of the transit-oriented oriented district study. So we would respectfully request this commission change section twelve point seven point five two to go from two hundred percent to three hundred percent so that's consistent with the study, consistent with the findings that the committee and I believe the commission adopted back in two thousand nineteen. Chris, let's let's move on. I guess we'll deal with it. Let's deal with the setbacks next. So this was a, this this regulation is is really hard, the current regulation. And frankly, it must lead to, if anybody wants to redevelop any of the sites downtown and give them their, put them in their back of their historical position or in line with everything that's going on the street, you can't do that either without a variance or some kind of text change. So currently, the street line, stand line setbacks in the center design district and neighborhood business district are ten feet, except that a building or structure may extend to the street line or any street which is one hundred feet or more and with or and we want to add or within or with the property with frontage on Uncle or Stanford Street. And in the design commercial district, the setback shall be twenty-five feet. Well, for example, if now we were to have a Well, for example, if now we were to have a ten-foot setback, you, right now, everything is in line on Sanford Street, everything is aligned on both sides of us on the, on Uncle Road. We would have this gap that would push it back ten feet and you would no longer have this sweeping street line down front, down, down Uncle Road. And, and frankly, it would do a little bit to take away from the requirement of going fifteen feet with your, with your first floors. So what we're trying to do is keep the historical character along the Post Road and Uncle Road and Sanford Street, where as you know, you've got Archie Moore's, you've got the restaurant next to it, and most of the buildings all the way up to the Post Road along Sanford Street sit right on the property line. So you go sidewalks into the building, you have this nice, beautiful cohesive downtown. That's what we're looking to achieve. So we're asking to not have a ten-foot setback on the buildings that, that front on Unqua or Sanford Street. That will just be consistent with buildings that are alongside of it. You could even ask, add the Post Road for that matter of fact. Can you imagine if somebody wanted to rebuild all that, all those beautiful buildings along the Post Road, but now you had to push them back ten feet? And every building had to be rebuilt, even needed a variance or was in some kind of cookie cutter cookie cutter formation versus the uniformity of having all the buildings up on the street. It's actually interesting that a lot of the towns that are doing studies in the downtown, and I'm sure Emmeline and Jim could talk about that, are looking to bring their buildings up to the street line. That in fact, a lot of the towns are having minimum setbacks because they want their retail areas and their glass fronts and the people walking by on the sidewalks to be able to look in, see what's going on in the restaurants, see what's going on in the stores, make it more attractive. That's what's beautiful about Fairfield Center now. Almost every building along the Post Road in Fairfield Center sits right up on the street line. Same thing with Uncle Road as you go from the bottom of the Post Road, where Uncle Road's on the bottom of the Post Road, all the way up to the bridge. You look at, and if you look at from basically Reef Road and Uncle Road, those intersections, all the way down to, I don't want to say Mill Plain Road, but certainly past Miller Street, all those buildings, all the way back, basically to the pantry, all the way to basically Rite Aid, all sit up on the street, and that's what people love about walking the downtown. Otherwise, everything becomes a cookie cutter and you lose the uniformity of this beautiful downtown that's been created along the Uncle Road corridor and along the Post Road corridor, and certainly Sanford Street, as I said, with Archie Moore's and the restaurants and the other retail buildings that are located alongside. Excuse me?
Uh, that was somebody's microphone. Sorry.
If you have any questions, please stop me. I'm trying
Please mute your line.
Okay.
Keep going.
Chris, let's continue, move up to same thing with regard to sideline property setbacks. So properties with frontage on Uncle Road may be able to reduce the setback to zero. For that matter, I believe the commission would like to add the Post Road. If you look up and down Unqua right now, these buildings are side to side. It's beautiful. Everything runs together. If you look along along either side, up and down the Post Road, you have the same situation where the buildings all match, make a beautiful street front. You don't have anybody loitering between buildings. You don't have any issues between buildings. It all, it all is very uniform, fits very well. Chris, I don't know if you want to bring up some pictures that we can show, but I mean, I don't know that we necessarily know that. I don't, I don't think there's anybody in this commission hasn't walked up and, up and down the street, knows what I'm talking about. When you go, when you walk down, when you go from the Community Theater up to, from Las Vegas and walk up to the other restaurants that are on the other side of Donnelly Way, it's just, it, it, it will all be uniform. It'll all, it'll all be consistent and consistent with the historical development of the downtown. To require a ten-foot setback or those side yard setbacks. Now remember, the commission will always have, this is our, this is the current, along along Uncle Road, this is where Las Vegas is, this is where the building is. And as you walk, if you came up and down that Uncle Road, Chris, do we have pictures in a row kind of that we could show the commission? Yeah. As you can see, the buildings tie together. It's nice the way our building connects with the Community Theater Building and there's not this, because especially because it wraps a corner. We should, the commission under special permit can certainly require more spacing, but we would like the ability to connect or have these buildings have a zero setback without, without having to go for a variance. And, and basically what we're doing is asking us to please replace what we're, what we have now with what currently exists throughout the entire downtown, up Uncle, up Uncle Road and along the Post Road. Chris, if you can let's go, let's go to our next change. Next change is section twelve point seven point six point six. This is additional setbacks. So currently, any building or structure or portion thereof exceeding a height of thirty feet shall be setback one foot in addition to the applicable minimum setback requirement for each three feet or fraction thereof by which a building or other structure or other portion exceeds thirty feet in height. So the hard part about this is once you, once you push that first floor to fifteen feet is required, then you have at least one to two floors that catch above that thirty feet height really quickly. We believe that, that certainly the commission can ask in it, throughout the process, if they felt things were, if they felt the, the, the building was, was too tall or not set back far enough, that they could ask through the special permit process for certain jogs in the buildings or certain offsets. I know, for example, on Uncle Road, I think the commission where we had a, we had a special permit, we had a building that the commission thought was six hundred feet was too long. You asked us to split it and the, split the building in the middle and pursuant to your special permit process, you had the right to do that. And I think we end, at your urging, up on Uncle Road, three thirty-three Uncle Road, we ended up with a better project. I originally was hesitant and I gotta tell you, I know the commission fought hard about that. And I think we ended up with a better project for that. I think in other instances, to, to put jogs in the building along a corridor which is very very uniform, where you don't have that, we, we for example, along the Post Road, if you look at where the old, where the current university bookstore is, if you look along other locations along the Post Road, they, those, those buildings are flush to the street. We certainly have the ability during a special permit, this way we'd like to have things setback. We would not like to have the requirement to have jogs in our buildings. We think it's frankly, would be very nice to have some residential right up against the street. And for that reason, we would request that. I mean, in a situation like this at fifty feet, so you'd have your first thirty feet could be at the first thirty feet could be at with no, with no setback. If you accept the, your, your, if you accept your findings and your recommendations, it would be with no setback. Then after thirty feet, you would have to go back one foot for three feet. So for the next twenty feet, you'd have to go back six feet. Basically, six and a half feet. We think that that would create I, I just think a disjoint in the, and especially when you, a disjointed development, especially when you have a fifteen foot first floor. And certainly something that could be regulated through your special permit process, but we would like the ability to present to you something that does not, does not have these jogs in the building. And I will, when I show you the plan down the road, you'll see an example of why we think this would be very effective. Last but not least, Chris, I think we have the parking ratios. So as you can see, under twenty-eight point six point one, when dwelling units are located in any district falling within the transit oriented design overlay, the residential parking requirement should be reduced to lesser one parking space per bedroom unit per bedroom or one and one, one and, it used to say one and one half basis per household. We would like to reduce that to one and a quarter, consistent with your recommendations. Chris, can we go to the so under your recommendations? Hold on one second. My wife is talking to my grandkids and I don't want you to to hear that. I just have to shut a door. I apologize. Parking utilization and performance. So the town should continue to collect information regarding residential parking utilization. In the Center Business District, whether it may be appropriate of one space per bedroom or one and a quarter per unit, whichever is less for residential uses in town. The downtown station area has the strongest walkable character any area Fairfield, with shopping, dining, community uses, schools, workplaces, all located in the area. It also has the same level of train service at the Fairfield Metro Station and on the street parking is regulated. I think the commission has taken notice of that. I think with previous approvals of a property next to St. Thomas Church, I think another project next to on Uncle Place, actually, where I believe you had, I think there was about, I think it was closer to a one, one to one parking ratio. We think we would like you to adopt a parking in the Center Business District, consistent with what the recommendations are here. Now where it really comes into play, and it will show you in a, in our application as we move forward with what we plan to do at fifteen Uncle Place, is when you have mixed use. When you have mixed use, where in other words, if you have retail and you have office, you have these counts for retail where most of, like, for example, the people at Las Vegas, everybody that goes to Las Vegas, and we've been going there for years. They all, that, that's all people who park on, and the people that we believe that will use the retail and use the community theater. They, they typically park along, along the Post Road or along Uncle Street where there's two hour parking. So what you're gonna have is, we're gonna have a parking ratio for offices and retail that will, that in a mixed use area will, will are, and then when you have residential on top, the uses are compatible so that, for example, on, on, for, on, on on retail or office where it's four spaces per thousand, the office people aren't parking there at night. Or if they're living there and working there, it's the same car for somebody who's living there. So the reason I think the commission wanted recommend it and the committee recommended to drop this is that people will be able to walk to the train. They don't need as many cars. There's on, there's on-street parking that is permitted both on Sanford Street, Uncle Road and the Post Road, and it's very well regulated. If it's a mixed-use building, the people who are, are working in the retail or who are driving to their office, those spaces will be made available, which, which is, which is at a much higher rate per square foot than the people who, who would be living in the building. Therefore, we think in this instance, the one space per bedroom and the one space, one and a quarter per unit should be adopted in the Center Business District, consistent with your recommendations for development as, as adopted in your study. And those are the changes we would like to make to the Center Design Business District, basically development standards. We tried, we waited, we waited for you folks to do all your homework and we tried to design a project and try to update your regulations to be consistent with all the work that was done in this transit study. And we think in doing all this work, I think in spending all the time you did and coming up with this plan, I think if you adopt, basically take your plan and adopt the suggestions that we're adopting and that you yourselves suggested, I think you'll come up with a very cohesive, mixed-use plan for downtown that I think would be very well served. And I think will allow for the development of these infill properties to be developed consistently with what the standards, with, with, with the way that, with the way that downtown has been developed already. Right now, somebody has to knock, if somebody were to knock down one of these buildings, you can't, you can't put it back in its place. We're trying to preserve that look, try to preserve the character of downtown, try to make downtown thrive, bring residential people downtown. I can tell you right now, the hard work that you folks put in on Uncle Road, the, the demand for the apartments has been tremendous, the the, the input of being able to walk to town, walk to the train, and people are gonna go back to the train is, 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 is a huge demand and a huge asset of the downtown Fairfield. I will tell you, I'm sure all, as we know, all of the, all of these retailers who have been suffering, the biggest users of the retail, the biggest users of the restaurants on a seven-night-a-week basis, not on a Friday and Thursday, Friday and Saturday night, will be the people that live downtown. It'll be the people that'll shop downtown, the people that can walk to downtown, the people that can make the election instead of driving over to drive into Costco or try and drive into BJ's. I'm gonna go walk to Hemlock Hardwear and get something, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna eat at Good Eats. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a, I'm gonna, I can walk downstairs and have something at Post Road Tavern. They're the ones that are gonna do that on a Monday night. And I, and I, and I, and I think for the success of, to have the continued success of our retailers and restaurateurs of downtown, we need to be able to keep the look of downtown, keep, however, bring people downtown to, to take advantage of all, all of this great asset that we have that, that's been developed over the years. For this reason, we respectfully request you would adopt all of these changes because they are consistent with your own recommendations and your own findings. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you want. I can, I can move into our, our plan, but probably let's, I, I think if we can talk about the regulations, issues that you may have with your own, you know, with, with, what I think are your own findings. I'd like to, I like, we could, we could talk to them before we go, before we move on to the project in particular. So this way, at least we can kind of segregate. I don't want these, these changes are not just for our project. These changes, I think, are the way for you to implement, implement, we're basically helping you implement your study.
Understood. Very good. Does, does any of the commissioners have any questions for Attorney Rizzio? Commissioner Braun, I see, and then Bremen?
Hi, Attorney Rizzio. Can you just help me? I'm trying, trying to conceptualize the buildings that are there now in relation to the proposed building, just so I can understand it in my mind. The application says there's five buildings. Are they the buildings that currently house? I think you mentioned yoga, Las Vitas and the burger shop, but not Cafe Monaco on one side or have it on the other side?
Well
Those are not in them, right?
I guess the issue is, my, my question for the commission and, and Commissioner Braun, I'm not trying to I, I think it might be easier if we talked about the regulations, unless you want me to use this as an example. I haven't gone into our property, the property in particular.
Oh, okay.
Because remember, these, these regulations and these find, these, these find, these, these respected, these amendments are with respect to implementing your recommendations.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how close you're getting. You're sort of gonna share a wall with with
Chris, why don't you bring a picture up of the, of the current frontage?
Are you gonna be right up against like the other buildings north of you, those little tiny houses, or is there any separate wall?
Let me give you an example. This is for example. I will show for, by example, a, a property fifteen Uncle Road currently sits in the Center Design Business District. Chris, why don't you bring up the, a picture of the, of the frontage on Uncle Road? Then we can also show the rear of the property on Sanford Street.
So In the, in the meantime, Ray, if you don't mind, Commissioner Braun, I just want to let you know that I just mute you in between when you, when you're listening versus when you're speaking. For whatever reason, I get a lot of feedback on your line. So if you're muted, I'm sorry, I'm the one who's doing it. Sorry.
Okay. So there's the Community Theater. We all know that. Basically dead center of downtown, runs wall to wall with the buildings on either side of it. So Chris, now, where you see where it says yoga, Commissioner Braun? That is the start of fifteen Uncle Road. Now, Chris, have you got another picture? And at, as you can see it there, the built, the walls basically about each other.
How tall is the Community Theater?
Community Theater, let me, I, I don't, I don't have that number right in front of me. So that, we basically run wall to wall up to Donnelly Walk. Chris, if we can go along to the back, so that, that whole frontage there, those buildings, like I said, okay. Chris, if we can go along to the back, so that, that whole frontage there, those buildings, like I said, okay. Chris, what, you have any more, another pictures? No, no. Yeah, go ahead. Back, back one, Chris. Sorry, folks. All right. So those are the multiple buildings that are in the back. You'll see an office building. I think there's an allergist that works in there. There's, believe it or not, there's a garage that has, uh, our client would keep cars there and stuff like that. Then there's another little building. And then there's actually a house in between where a, a friend of the family occupies. So you've got these multiple uses. You've got a garage. You've got an office building there.
So catch a healthy habit and swim and surf are part of the buildings that will become part of this or are they not part of it?
Correct, correct. So everything you see where, you see where Archie Morris is? Right there, going toward the post road. You see that red building? That's the office and then we go, you go out toward the post road. Go ahead, Chris. Yeah. So that's the build, that's from the front, that's the frontage. And there's this, there's also what's located there. That's within, within the property.
So you're going on the corner. Okay. Your building will go flush up to the walkway from Uncle Road back to like where Archie Morris is.
Correct.
Okay.
So Archie Moore is basically, yes, a hundred percent. With the building, that, that's the parcel right there. That's what we're looking at.
That's a parcel with the existing buildings.
With the existing building. So you can see there's the five buildings that are currently located on the property. Yeah, okay. Does that make sense now, Commissioner Braun, where the five buildings are?
Yes, I'm a little concerned about the lack of green space, but that's not part of what we're talking about now.
Yeah, right. Okay. Commissioner Bremen?
Thank you. So, Attorney Rizzio, if we could talk about the parking just for a minute and maybe get into the weeds. Yeah, I understand you're proposing a, a reduction to 1.25 spaces per unit for residential. And I, I guess, you know, the, the issue with downtown is that you have retail uses that maybe because they're non-conforming, lawful non-conforming, are, you know, perhaps they don't have any parking right now. Like, like you said, you know, people are utilizing public street parking potentially for places like Las Vegas. How do we know that 1.25 is the right number when we're talking about a mixed-use building in downtown that's going to have residences as well as retail and office? And the, the residents, the residents are presumably going to have cars, many of them. And you're talking about uses that are not complementary with respect to parking. And, and what I mean is obviously you can imagine, you know, an office use that is only nine to five, Monday through Friday, and then a house of worship that's only Saturday or Sunday. Those are perfectly complementary as, you know, with respect to parking potentially. And then you have resident, residents and retail uses where you're going to have people who are home and their cars are parked. At the same time, there's others who want to use the retail on a weekend, right? So why, why is 1.25 per unit the right number? And why is that not underparked? And how do we deal with the fact that you're going to have a retail component to a mixed-use project that's, that is going to have potentially a greater parking requirement?
Well, Commissioner, there's, trying to answer this, I have, I have our traffic engineers on tonight.
There's a lot there. I throw a lot at you.
Yeah. And, and part of it is, I'd like to say I relied on you and your committee when you thought that one, one, one and a quarter was the right number. So what we tried to do was design a project that the committee studied, that this commission studied and that this commission adopted and basically said, recommended as the right number. And I'm not just going to say we accepted it blindly, but we agree with the commission and we agree with the committee. From there, it'll, it'll, from there, your judgment, basically what's permitted in the reg, what's allowable in the reg, and then what is proposed in a different application seem to be two different answers. I agree with you. I think the flexibility of having one and a quarter, or agree with the committee's report that one and a quarter per unit sounds to me like the right number. You, somebody in your, your committee, obviously, the committee obviously studied it and the commission obviously studied it. Our traffic expert and parking expert is here tonight who can also discuss it, although he did it as much, which, what's more important, what's going to be hard for me to then answer as, as why it works for our specific project. So I can do that later in the presentation. But, you know, no different than why everybody thought 1.5 was the direct one. The committee studied it. The commission looked at it and, and basically recommended one space per bedroom or one and a quarter per unit. And that's, we're just asking you to implement what the committee and the commission found. Neil, if Neil, Neil Alinsky's here? Can you, can we bring Neil up? Neil works at SLR and maybe he can comment on, on that.
Good evening, Gub.
There you go.
Y'all see me? For the record, Neil Alinsky with Mylon Mc, well, actually SLR consultant. Get used to the new, uh, nobody, but, um, in general, we worked on the traffic study. You haven't done a detailed parking needs analysis, but I just pulled up some statistical data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers where they have what they call their parking generation manual that looks at, basically parking counts at different types of land uses at different time periods. Just quickly looking at this, um, residential, say multifamily housing, sort of residential low-rise type of building for a site that is within half a mile of a train station. It's telling me that the data, the statistical data they published, this type of development in this type of location has an average parking rate of about one point, looks to be about 1.07 parked cars per unit on average for a multifamily residential development, basically in a TOD type area. So some statistical data that's been published nationally. And as Attorney Rizzio had mentioned, the TOD study, I haven't studied that myself in detail, but their recommendations were stated to be basically in, in, you know, generally matching that as well. So I hope that answers that particular question.
I, I, um, I appreciate your, um, your analysis with respect to, to residential, right? And so I wanted to follow up because the language that you put up from the recommendation from the TOD study referenced what, you know, going down to 1.25 for residential. But it didn't talk about a mixed-use development that had a retail component. And typically retail has a higher parking requirement. So how do we, yeah, right? So, so.
That'll be added in, Commissioner. So for example, for example, 15 Uncle Road, um, in a, in the net, in the next application that we're going to be talking about has 5,000 square feet of office. It has 4,000 square feet of retail. And it has 36 apartments or 39 bedrooms. We would need to account for those unit, those bedrooms, account for all of that and our, and then accounts separately for our mixed, for the mixed-use part of it. So in other words, we, we take, we're not looking to change the parking requirements in the Center Design Business District for retail. We're not looking to change the parking requirements for office. That'll all add up to the, but, but the component that deals with solely that residential, the residential component of the overall calculation for the project, we don't believe should be one and a half. We agree with the, with the findings of the committee and the, and the recommendation. And now you've heard the statistical data from Neil that one and a quarter would seem to be the more appropriate number to allocate toward the residential component of our project. They're not, they're not independent. They all add up, Commissioner Bremen. We're not looking to say one and a quarter for the whole mixed-use project. We're saying, we still have to then show you that we have enough parking for a retail in our office. But as relates solely to the residential, we have to deal with that, that component. Neil, go ahead.
If I may just quickly add, um, there's a time-of-day compatibility here. I don't have, again, all this, we didn't do a detailed parking needs study. But, um, you know, during the daytime, not all of the residential units presumably under normal conditions are going to be parked there. Some people are going to, they're going to leave the site and drive to work during the daytime when the retail and the office is being used. And on the flip side, at night, when the, the retail and office workers and patrons will be gone, the residents, you know, will be fully parked, but, but less than 1.225, probably, yeah, right around 1.07 to 1.25, somewhere in that range. Yeah. So I hope that answered, helped to answer the question.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bremen, was there anything I didn't address that you had asked them?
No, you can continue.
No, the, that, that was, that was helpful. I, I guess the, the last thing, thing I'll say is that obviously, you know, that during the week, you know, residential can be complementary with retail. But at night, uh, you have, you know, people coming home from work and parking and then restaurants. Obviously a restaurant use is not, not complementary during that time of the day. So it does, it is a time-of-day dependent, as you mentioned.
Attorney Rizzio, please continue.
I think I went through all of our changes.
Okay.
That, that.
Commissioners on the, on the text amendment? I don't think so. Very good. So you can, you can move on.
Okay. Chris, why don't we start with the survey and go back to the property? And just for the record, um, as we're moving from one application to the other, I would respectfully request this commission, as we deal with the first part of our application, which were the text amendments, just reflect for the record that we believe the presentation made is consistent with your plan of conservation development and consistent with your traffic study. And just kind of summing up that, um, everything I think that we, we propose will allow the downtown to be continued to develop in accordance with that study and the recommendations that this commission and the committee had found. Thank you. I just wanted to transition now into a specific application.
Very good.
So you're welcome. So as we get now into a specific application, because the previous discussion was about the Central Business District in whole, now the application of these amendments and the application of the current regulations as would relate to the proposal, the, the second part of our second application before you tonight, which is a specific application for a special permit for the property at 15 Uncle Road. As I said, Dr. Forrest, 15, is the principal of 15 Uncle Road LLC. This property has been in his family for over a hundred years. They've watched, completely watched the development of Fairfield. Uh, I don't think anybody has been more historically involved with the property than his family. And he would like to bring this property, because enhance this property, enhance the, the development, enhance the downtown by coming up with a mixed-use project which combines you currently have residential on site, you currently have office on site, you currently have retail on site. But to add a considerable amount more parking, to add more residential, keep some consistent retail and add an office component to the project. So Chris, why don't we come to our first, go to the first page of the sheet of our, our proposal? So this is property at 15 Uncle Road. And you all know the location. It's almost, it's, if you know where the community, everybody knows where the community theater is, one building. Let's call it north on the western side of Uncle Road. Basically the first building after the community theater going north along Uncle Road on the western side of the property. Chris, if we can start going through the plans. John Gads is with us tonight, has, has designed, we think, a beautiful mixed-use building. We got a text from Chris. Hold on one second. Well, Chris's computer just crashed. So Emmeline, is there any way you can, uh, can everybody still hear me? No?
Yes, we can all hear you.
Okay, sorry. I'm so Emmeline, if you can take over and you have all the plans before you, so until my, uh, alrighty. Okay. So this is the building which our client has designed. Our client has designed a project which we think fits in perfectly with the, I'll take you through these first elevations. So as you can see, if the amendments are adopted, the building is going to have that historic Fairfield colonial-like look downtown. You'll see is the first floor being 15, will be about 4,000 square feet of retail. It'll be 15 feet high first floor. The front section of the building facing, facing Uncle Road will have approximately 5,000 square feet of office on the second floor. As you can see, if you look in that right-hand corner, the Sanford Street view, the building has multiple elevations. So the building basically will have a drive-in parking garage that'll be accessed from Sanford Street for over 50, for about 54 vehicles. What will happen is you'll see the parking garage is well, it is, is well-structured and well-hidden so that it sits under the three, the additional three floors. So it's, the parking in the back will be at grade consistent with the grade of the property on Uncle Road. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? So what you're looking at on, and I think it's important to look at these two views. Uncle Road has these fif, this 15-foot first-floor retail. If you wanted to enter and park in our building, you'd go around, you'd come up Sanford Street, you'd make a right into our garage. And then you would park underneath the building. The parking, first-floor parking backs up to this front edge of retail, which is about 4,000 square feet. I think it's 3,900 square feet. The second floor, what you see will be office. There'll be about 5,000 square feet of office located on the first floor. It, the office will be a little bit deeper. So what you have there is a, a parking space. That's the, that is, there, there is the first, so if you can see Uncle Road, you see Sanford Street, you'll see the parking and then you'll see in effect where a lobby area is and the, and the four retail spaces up front. Well, the parking will be accessed through a parking garage where you'll be able to drive. There'll be, Emmeline, if you can go back one, one sheet, it'll show you the floor plans will show you that there'll be a garage underneath where you'll go down a ramp and most of the residents will park here. Well, there'll be 28 parking spaces down underneath the building. So there'll be an underground parking garage. The next floor as we go up, Emmeline, if you can bring up, go up to sheet, the next sheet, will have surface-level parking where this will be at street level. Nope, back one, if you can go back one, I'm sorry, Emmeline. Nope, back one, if you can go back one, I'm sorry, Emmeline. You can go, you, you'll enter in on, you can enter in on Sanford Street, park in the back, enter into the lobby where there is the parking, and there's the access to the back end of the retail. You'd have to walk out onto the street to enter into the retail. As you can see, there's also the ramp that would take you down to the below, the below-street level parking, which would be the parking garage. So now what you see is, we saw on that first page, you see the first floor facing Uncle Road being that retail space that has the 15-foot elevate, uh, 15-foot in height. And on the back along Sanford Street, you see the entry and exit to the parking garage. Emmeline, if we can move up to the second floor, and this is how the mixed use component starts coming into play. Talking with staff and taught, putting together this project together, we also thought it was important, important to do, to add another mixed use component. We already have office on the site, we're gonna add another 5,000 square feet of office that will be on the, on the second floor facing, facing, um, Uncle Road. And then also on that floor will be apartments. So the apartments will be on the second, third and fourth floor. The retail will be on the front spa, front part of the first floor. And then the front part, the, the Uncle Road facing section of the second floor will have office space. We'll move up to the third floor. And there's where you'll see the third apartments on the third and fourth floor, consistent with what we talked about in the regulations. Mostly all, there's 33 one bedrooms and three two bedrooms. And then if you go to the fourth floor, and then there's the, we move up one more time, I think it shows the attic plan where we will have an observation deck and all of our utilities, condensers, things like that. And now when, if we can go next to the elevations, you'll see why, so we're very comfortable that we can meet, if we had to, we could meet the 52-foot number, but we would have to have a flat roof. We would, we, in talking about the amendment going to a 55-foot, the 55-foot would bring us to the midpoint of the eve of this building, which would give the building more than just a flat roof. Very hard, you can't really, very difficult to get the 15-feet of first floor, have that, you know, 10 to 12, 10 to 11 feet between each floor, and then still stay at the, would, would get you to about the 52 feet, but then you'll end up with no architectural features. We just thought this was a better way to hard some of our mechanicals, to, uh, add some character to the building. However, the commission was comfortable with a 52-foot height, as it, it is in their recommendations, we would agree to accept that, or that you could go beyond 52 feet if it was for architectural features. And then if, which you can see, if you look along the, this is basically the south elevation, which would be if you're looking toward, um, one of the side elevations. So you'll have a combination of brick and siding, siding on the residential part, brick on the commercial part, and then the back end would be the Sanford, Sanford Street section. John Gads, are you, if John Gads is still online, John, if you can take the commission through your design of the building, your, the interplay of how you came up with this design, and why this works and is so integral, why it works for the site, and talk a little bit about your qualifications. John is, John, if you can take over for me now, and then I'm sure Emmeline can help you through the, through the sections of the plans.
Commission, um, my name is John Gads. I'm the president of Primrose Companies, which is a company that specializes in design, development and construction. It was, uh, the company was started in 1978, incorporated in 1980. And it, uh, it does architectural designs and also development and construction of the buildings. And as I said, we've been doing it for over 40 years. When Dr. Forrest first approached me over a year ago, his intention was to see what he could do with the existing structures. So he asked me to analyze the feasibility of, of doing apartments over existing, the main existing building. But after viewing the issues that have been raised during this hearing relating to feasibility of use and parking and all of the other issues, he was finally convinced that, uh, that in order to achieve a better development program, that it would be best to consider demolishing all the structures and creating a, a new building that would meet his requirements. And his requirements were to just, to basically continue to have retail similar to what he currently has. Again, this was prior to COVID, so, you know, a lot of the thought process has changed where some of the tenants have been lost now, and there's some vacancy in the buildings. But, uh, for the most part, when I began to study the site, I looked at how to achieve what was required, meaning having a mixed use component at the same time, uh, attempting to, you know, to maximize the number of apartments that could be obtained from the site. And again, this is all due to, to cost factors, and how to achieve the, the parking that would accommodate what was being designed. Uh, so, uh, the plan that I came up with basically has two driveway entrances on Sanford Street. One, on the south side is a ramp that goes down to the basement where 28 vehicles are able to be parked. At the same time, I introduced a location for bicycle rack. And then on the main level, the street level, as Attorney Rizzio stated, we have facing full length of the property on Anqua, uh, storefronts. The storefronts are similar to what now exists with a, with recessed entry doors so that they don't swing into the sidewalk, similar to, you know, typical center-type buildings, where we've got, you know, the brick veneer to match the, uh, the theater facade. And at that level, again, we have the additional 26 parking spaces. We also have one electric charging station. We have two locations for the trash, one is for the residential, which is a trash compactor similar to the ones that I've designed for all other type of buildings of this, of this type. And then one location for trash containers for the commercial where we would have, you know, the, the bigger needs for recyclables and so forth. Uh, so the, the first level, street level, again, we have 4,000 square feet of, of retail. The depiction of the spaces obviously is, you know, depending, dependent on the tenants. The spaces are small, they're, they average out at 1,000 square foot per unit, but there, you know, there may be a tenant that comes in and will take 2,000 square feet. So it's, but right now it's set up for four possible tenants. As we move into the upper levels, uh, the, the second floor, as stated, you know, there's this, the program calls for having some office space. It was meant to, to be small office spaces to accommodate possibly, you know, the COVID state, you know, the offices that are satellite to many businesses. Uh, so we're, uh, we set up 5,000 square feet of that to provide the, the component of the mixed use. And the rest of the floor, of the second floor is apartments. And as stated, we have 39 bedrooms, but 36 apartments. There's an additional, uh, again, because of the, the new requirement for, you know, for in-house or apartment office space, uh, there's, 26 of the apartments have, have an office. The, and in creating the, the facade and/or the design, I, I attempted to come up with what I believed was and believed in keeping what, with the, you know, the character of, of the center of Fairfield. You know, we're looking at some, you know, brick and, and other, you know, moldings that are being applied to the facade to, to create that, that downtown Fairfield feeling. The, as stated on the roof, you know, there's always two ways of dealing with the roof. In this particular case, you know, the height issue is, is caused by the, the roof style. The, uh, Dr. Forrest had wanted a pitch roof only because of the concerns he has for the flat roofs and the potential for future maintenance and so forth. Uh, so, and that's the main reason why we have a, a pitch roof to it. If the pitch roof is to be maintained, then, you know, the, uh, we do have, I did provide access to, you know, to the area where, uh, the condensers and an observation deck would be provided. Obviously, if a decision is made that the, that the, that the height, you know, is, is more important to be maintained at a, at a lower, um, figure, then, uh, you know, basically we would go into a flat roof type of design. It wouldn't change the facade. The only thing that we would wind up with is, is parapets that would be at least 42 inches, and that would be to hide, you know, any, any equipment that would be positioned on the roof. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Yes, Commissioner?
So I'm looking at a, a street view of the community theater. It looks as though flush, the roofs are flush with Las Vegas right now. And the plans say that the building that exists is 22 feet tall. So I'm assuming the community theater is 22 feet tall, so you would be adding 31 feet on this building right flush with the community theater. That presents an issue for me, not just with aesthetics, but how do you? Then you're gonna have a party deck on top of the new building or some kind of a platform for people to stand on, on top of the raised roof? It seems like a huge jump, um, from one building to the next. Am I dimensions correct, the way I calculated it?
I don't, well, like, you know, I'm assuming that somebody provided the, uh, the height of the adjoining building, but I'm assuming that you may be correct, it may be a little higher than 22 feet, but I'm not sure. But the fact is that, that is basically the theater is a one-story, or is it two stories? I, I believe it's only a one-story building. So, you know, here we're talking about a four-story building. So obviously the height is going to be, you know, greater. Uh, it, it, you know, basically the, you know, the, we had these discussions with staff. The site facing the, the public walkway, uh, it was determined that we could, you know, install windows on it. So if you look at the north side, you'll see that there's windows and, you know, facing north. Unfortunately, on the south side, because you are on the property line adjacent to an adjacent, you know, property owner, you're not able to have any openings alongside the property line. So yeah, you'll have, you know, a brick facade there. The, but again, it's, uh, you know, the same way that if, uh, the theater owner decided that he wanted to, you know, add a floor to the theater to put in, you know, a restaurant or some other feature, then he, you know, again, under, under your regulations, uh, or at least the, the part of this tax amendment that, that's being requested, he would be allowed to do so, uh, you know, to, uh, you know, I, I didn't view, uh, you know, the, I viewed this site as it related to the, the requirement that was being, you know, asked of me to design. Uh, so I, I don't, you know, again, whatever happens, uh, I know that on the north side, as I said, there is a, the walkway that belongs to the town, and therefore that's the, the more visible, you know, feature. The other thing also to consider is that the building was designed in a T shape. So the, the, that area that is adjacent to the theater is only, uh, I believe 60 feet in depth, and then the building goes into the T formation and, 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 uh, you know, as it heads to Sanford Place, you're further away from it, you know, from that area.
Do you have an aerial view showing what it looks like, the building looks like, um, you know, on the, on the property line that, with the, yep, Sanford, how, and, and with the, with the setbacks on Sanford and as well as on, on Anqua?
See, I don't, I, I don't, but I, I think if you look, uh, I don't, again, it's difficult because, you know, doing these Zoom things, you don't have access to the materials, so it's a little more difficult. But I believe that the rendering depicts, if you look at the rendering, I, I attempted to depict, you know, the building on the left versus, you know, the building on the right.
Yeah. What is the, what is the, um, the rendering look like on Sanford Street? Of the, the, the back, if you will, of the building?
Again, if you, if you look at the, the rendering, and again, I, I don't have access to it and, but it should have been provided.
Yep.
It was basically a cover sheet. The cover sheet shows both, both elevations.
Right, and so those, on Sanford Street, those are garage bays for cars to come and go?
Right. The only, the only thing that, that was added on after the rendering was created was there, we had a discussion of how to deal with visuals coming in and out of the garage. So I had implemented a number of, of improvements to the plan by introducing some sensors and cameras and, and opening up. Because if you look at the north side facing the walkway, you'll find that, uh, you know, there's, right now, there's a window and then there's a brick wall, uh, under, you know, just underneath the building, you know, along the, the property line. That brick wall is to hide the trash containers, you know, from view. Uh, and where the window now is, there will be a, a large opening, uh, that will allow for, you know, for viewing. And that's the same on the south side.
Yeah, and, and so those two garages are the primary ingress, egress for the garage? That, that's how, that's where cars get in and out on Sanford Street, one way?
Right. Basically, if you, you know, again, if Chris brings the Sanford, uh, Street elevation, that's the, what you're looking at there is the north side of the building on Sanford Place. And as you can see, you have the, uh, you know, the, what appears to be an opening of the brick. Uh, that's just, as the cars come up, they can view, uh, you know, to the north. And then you have the brick wall hiding, you know, the trash containers. But if you, if, if Chris can bring out the Sanford Place elevation, well, okay. So if you can, well, that will do it, but if you look at the Sanford Street, that's, that's basically the fiction of what we're doing. And that is that those, even though it shows gray solid, but it was meant to be similar to the storefront, the, you know, grills, aluminum that come down and they're, you know, basically it's just for security purposes, uh, that the, you know, the, uh, that people will have, you know, controls and that the overhead doors will open and close. Again, because we have a 15-foot, uh, we're setting up 15-foot Florida, you know, for the retail height, that means that the garage height is going to wind up being about 12 feet, uh, for clearances. So there's, you know, there's plenty of clearances, but the building will have two main entrances. As you can see, the one, the main entrance on Sanford, uh, Place, uh, and then a main entrance on, um, Anqua. Uh, again, the, as I said, the only change here in, in putting together the design for, and again, if, Chris, if you keep on shifting it to the right, um, but, um, not up to the right, I'm sorry, getting late, to the left. And again, to answer, uh, the question that was raised before, you can see on the extreme left, uh, the, the theater property. And then you can look at the right, and as you can see, it, the, you know, the building is two stories higher than the, the building on the left. And, uh, you know, again, it's, you know, the depiction is that there will be, uh, you know, numerous storefronts, and then the main entrance, you know, to the, to the building, um, with some, uh, you know, streetscape being introduced. So, uh, again, if there's any questions, I'll, I'll answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Gads?
No, I do. Mark.
Mark, okay. That's, I saw Commissioner Braun saying, and then I, then I got you.
I guess I want to bring up the the dens. They look an awful lot like they could be bedrooms, which would, they they have windows, they're large, they're near a bathroom. And I'm wondering what why they're not counted as bedrooms?
Well, again, the, you know, the idea was that these would be apartments that would be for transit oriented professionals. And as such, that one of the rooms would be set up to accommodate and, you know, a an office. So they're set up as offices.
But a tenant could use them as a bedroom, right? And that might throw off the parking count?
Well, again, I, you know, the the idea is that what this commission will be approving is basically 36 apartments with 39 bedrooms. If, you know, if if anything happens beyond that, then it's a violation of the approval. So I don't, you know, again, I'm not familiar with how, you know, the the town of Fairfield, not polices, but how they, you know, but I my understanding is that there's annual inspections, you know, on on these type of projects. So but all I can tell you is that, you know, again, that, you know, the when we initially started the project, we didn't have COVID. Once COVID hit and all the, you know, all of the requirements for it, like, you know, I, as Attorney Rizzio indicated, I started the downtown Shellton redevelopment program 18 years ago. And, you know, some of my projects, especially the mill building conversions, I have three, you know, bedroom units, and I have couples in them. And in many cases, the other two rooms are used as offices.
Well, I mean, are you are you proposing that the building would have rules preventing people from using these as bedrooms?
I believe that that would be the intent. I mean, it's not, I mean, you know, at this, as I said, the I can't speak for the owner. All I can speak for is the design that I utilized and the instructions I had as to how to, you know, apply the, you know, the instructions. The but as, you know, my understanding is that this commission, if it deemed it appropriate to approve this project, it would be approving it based on the the information that is being provided. Any modifications to it, they would, you know, they would be in violation of the of the of the approval. And any modifications that may need to be done in the future, they would have to go through a permit process to do it or seek either waivers or whatever other means they they will legal means they would have to, you know, to deal with any modifications. And and again, it's these are also business decisions. Right now, due to the parking shortages, I mean, a lot of this dictates, you know, it's dictated by parking shortages. So if the the owner decided, if he was, let's say that he was able to obtain another piece of property nearby that generated more parking, then he would have to come before this commission or, I would assume, to indicate that, look, I've been able to generate another 30 parking spaces. I now have the ability to convert some of these rooms into bedrooms, and this commission would have the option to view view it at that time and make a determination whether or not it was appropriate. But as as it stands right now, the program is that the the building has been designed as 36 apartments, 39 bedrooms, 26 offices within those.
Okay. Well, thank you. I have another quick question. I'm sure we'll come back to the bedrooms. But on the rendering of the Unqua side, over on the right side, is the opening to the Donnelly Walk. And there appears to be some kind of wall over it or some kind of pillars and opening? I'm not sure what I'm seeing there.
I think that's the adjoining building.
Well, isn't the Donnelly Walk there?
Yeah, there, I think between that building and the new building is the walkway.
Well, when I look at the picture, if you look at it, you'll see there's continuous building and some kind of.
It looks like white, yeah, white, white slats and and a railing, you know, around something on the on the first level.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's an adjacent structure.
Why would it be an adjacent structure? What's supposed to be adjacent is the Donnelly Walk in between that and the Archie Moore's building.
Yeah, but again, it's, you know, it's not, it's not an appropriate depiction because the the new building superseded whatever the background was. So that, you know, I would say.
So it's not.
It's not a photo. It's not a photograph. I I think just by the angle, you're not seeing there was, if you can remember, the building directly to the north on the other side of the Donnelly building is right there. And I think what's what's confusing a little bit, the Donnelly Walk is where that white fence is. And I think what happens based on the angle that the elevation's taken, what you were looking at is that upper, that upper section.
Yeah. On the next building after the Donnelly Walk.
Correct. Yeah. So that it was just, it was deceiving based on the angle of the elevation. I apologize.
Yeah.
So you can see it now.
It's not perfect. The 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 rendering is not perfect.
Yeah. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I think Commissioner Braun, you had your hand up for a question. Attorney Rizzio, you've been you've been raising your hand. You need to to interject here something?
Part of it was I had to unmute myself, but I wanted to address a couple of things by Commissioner Corcoran because I probably know and have been integrally involved with I I think, which is a very successful project in this area, in dealing with the tenants and the current tenants and the demands as relates to multiple bedrooms versus dens. I I can tell you with the leasing going on up the street, just, you know, 1,000 feet away, at 333 Unqua, that the amount of demand that is coming in, and that was part of the discussion when COVID hit, and talking to John Gads and talking to the owner, people who want one bedrooms or even cup couples, they do not want it, the amount of people working from home has just gone through the roof. People who want to downsize and move into apartment but don't want to have their office at their dining room table. So the demand for offices has has become huge. In this instance, in these floor plans, you'll notice there's no closets, there's no bedrooms, these are not in suite, they are separate offices. I can tell you up the street, every person that comes in wants to see the lofts where they can set up a separate office. A number of the units have dens. I have never heard one person in the multiple, multiple tours that have been given that says, how do I turn that into a bedroom? It'd be no different than having a living room and somebody saying, well, I can, let's count the living room as a bedroom because you can put a pullout couch there and somebody can sleep there. The one bedrooms are are one bedrooms. The dens really serve as dens, and the demand for dens, in talking to a lot of other developers, has never had as heightened a demand as possible. In fact, people like it because typically they were renting two bedroom units, paying for two bedroom units, as Mr. Gads was talking to before, using one of the bedrooms as an office. So there is no intent to mislead or misguided. There's really an attempt to address the demands of the marketplace for people who who like to work at home and work in the town. These are not, these are decent sized units, but like I said, for all of us who have worked from home and me who working in my bedroom right now, a den has become a very valuable asset in an apartment community. And we believe that this that's what this is looking to service. We're not looking to add more people into the into the building. We don't think we need that. However, to be able to provide a live work, a live work project, we think puts sets will help to set this project apart from some of the other projects that are in town. I I understand, Commissioner Corcoran, only because I've been dealing with it every day up the street, the demand for people to have a separate space to work at home has gone through the roof in the last two years. And if my wife could have me working out on the porch right now, she'd be very happy.
Commissioner Braun, do you have a a quick question? We're we got five minutes left here, and then we're going to break.
Okay. Um, the on the aerial rendering that you showed or the front, the front of Uncle Road rendering?
Yeah.
Entry to the parking garage on the far left, right? Sort of right abutting the community theater?
No, 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 no. Commissioner Braun, the the garage and the entryway, the first floor, the uncle road elevation will be just 100%. There'll be no access to the building from Uncle Road. All vehicular access will come into the garage off of Sanford Street. So this is the Uncle Road elevation. There is no vehicular access. There is no vehicular access on Uncle Road. What you see in the corner, the two section story section, one thing I wanted to point out from before, Commissioner Braun, you have to understand when we talk about this height of this building and being a little being a bit taller than the community theater, your current regulations allow five stories in this district, not four. We're proposing four, and they allow 50 feet. We're comfortable with 50 feet. So this is not something height wise or story wise, it's out of character to what's currently permitted in the regulations. The but now if you cook, I'm not sure if it's Chris or Emmeline who is, so as you can see, there's no vehicular entrance on Uncle Road. Sanford Street has the entrance for the garages. Does that make sense to you, Commissioner Braun now?
Yes, yes, thank you so much. That was this great assurance because that was going to be scary.
Yeah, no, no.
The triangle of space that's between the vinyl fence and the Donnelly Walk, because it's very wide on Uncle Road, then it gets narrower. Is that your property or?
Yes. So let's go, Chris, why don't you go to this overhead? So what you can see, this will be a landscaped area. It's where we have our drainage so that we we're basically improving the, I'll get, at our next hearing, the engineer will get through it. So what you have to see here, Chris, go first, go first to the existing conditions. And then I'll, I promise I'll sum up, and we'll get you out of here by 10 o'clock. So what you see is the existing conditions in the five buildings. Note, the size of the building, the current building, which goes about to the south, goes about three quarters the length of the property, right on the property line. To the north, there's a myriad of four other buildings that are just interspersed. And then you have the garage, which is part of this big building. Now, Chris, go to what what our proposed site plan looks like so I can show Commissioner Braun how we're actually creating more area. So the area in those triangles, that's going to be all green space and and landscaping and drainage. As you can see, there's only about 45 to 50 feet now that goes from property line to property line along Uncle Road. The building's virtually a T and does not go property property line at a zero setback. It's only the zero setback on the sides exist only in the front portion of the building for about a 45 to 50 foot distance off of Uncle Road. Is you understand that now? So now we're looking bird's eye, and you can see the T shape of the building versus the kind of diagonal rectangle that current that that exists in the shape of the law. And with that, I would assume we won't start with any more experts. Hopefully, we'll continue this, and I'll bring our I'll bring our engineer and our traffic engineer for their proposals, for their presentations at the next hearing. Is that okay, Chairman?
Yeah, no, that's definitely, you know, it's your application, you need to put on what you want to put on. But yeah, I would expect to hear from traffic as well as the the engineer to talk us through the, you know, the drainage. I think there's still some on the site plan that I would like for you to walk through, you know, some of the some of the details there. But but, you know, we're we're definitely breaking for the for for tonight.
Sure.
Okay.
But Chairman, can I ask one question before we leave? And this is, this is one of the things that I always that are always difficult. As we as we go through, remove, we move through the next section of the presentation, we have basically, in my mind, closed the the special, the the text amendment application as far as we've gone through questions and answers from the commission. We've gone through, maybe we haven't gone through public, but I was wondering at some point, because the commission may, we have, we have, we've designed a project consistent with as if the text amendment were adopted. I'm just wondering at some point, if you could put some thought of it, I don't need an answer tonight, that at some point we may close the text amendment so that the commission can vote on it. And should the commission have changes to those text amendments, we could leave our special permit application open so we can make the modifications rather than starting all over again in case there's a in case there's some modifications that need to be made as a result of the.
So so.
I just was asking you to think about it for our next hearing.
That that's fine, and that that certainly could be part of your your request, and now you've made it. And I I think I understand what you're saying is, you know, it when and that would come in our executive session. And so, you know.
Okay.
Obviously, the the plan that you the special permit that you've that you the application that you filed could not be approved unless the text amendment was was approved. Now, if in the context of our consideration of the text amendment, we decided, well, no, we don't like 55, we want to stick with the 50, whatever, and and suddenly it became clear that your special permit would not comply and would need to be denied, we could instead simply table that, and then that would enable you to make changes in conformity with the revised text amendment. But I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. But I but I understand the concept, and, you know, we'll we'll certainly keep that in mind.
Just food for thought. I just thought, you know, we'll think about how we handle that for our next hearing. But I appreciate the commission's patience. I apologize for the laborious way of going back and forth and getting through the text amendments, but I thought it was important. And I thank you for your time, and we'll see you all in two weeks.
Yeah, very good. Three, three weeks, three weeks.
Three weeks, sorry.
No, no, no worries. And so I will hold this, this application, this public hearing open, but I'll adjourn the meeting. So, good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.